Good evening, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council Performing the Housing Functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. At this time, we'll open the meeting with the public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time? All right, seeing no one, we'll have our Declaration of Closed Session by our Senate Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor McEckern. We have three items this evening on the regular agenda and an addendum item for closed session. However, we do not need to take any action or to get directions tonight on item number two, which was the existing litigation. The other three items are anticipated litigation, two of which are pursuant to subsection Government Code 5495-6.9b3a where there's the potential and there's significant exposure to litigation. The other item is related to subdivision C of Section 5495-6.9, it's B3C. Information regarding the potential litigation set forth on the agenda, to the extent there is reportable action, we will come out and report that action either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately preceding the regular session at seven o'clock.
All right, thank you. We'll have a few minutes left, so...
You can keep talking.
Good evening, I would like to call back to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council Performing the Housing Functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. At this time, we'll have any announcements out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor McEckern. There was no announcements as a result of the closed session. We did not need to go in on the Ropnean item, which was item number two, so we only had the three items and no reportable action.
All right, this time, we'll have our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation tonight will be led by Pastor Ray Jem of the Jubilee Community Church and Pledge of Allegiance by our Victorville Police Department Chief, Don Yoder. Y'all please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. We just ask your blessing on this meeting. Your word tells us and encourages us to pray for our leaders, and we do that tonight. We just pray that you would give them wisdom and give them insight and give them direction and bless this time in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I'll have our city clerk present the agenda to the council.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes but is not limited to addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. There is an additional piece of correspondence that was received prior to tonight's meeting from the legal counsel for one of the appellants on item number 11, Lisa Hayes, and it is regarding the Planned Parenthood appeal. And those are all the items I have. Mayor McEckern.
All right, thank you. We'll now move into the public comment portion of our agenda. Again, this is just normal public comment. It's not dealing with Agenda Item Number 11. I only have two cards under public comment, and I'll start with Raymond Ontiveros. And I know we do have an overflow room, so...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Raymond Ontiveros, and I've been a resident of Victorville the majority of my life. And one thing that I'm really surprised how much Victorville has grown. When I was growing up, we only had one junior high, one high school. Everybody from the High Desert, from Johnson Valley all the way to Wrightwood could come to this school. So we were like, this was the heart and the city of the desert, you know? So we all grew up together and we knew everybody. But now, I don't know, but these schools, there's so many schools and so many young people, and that's why we're so concerned about what's happening because we know what Planned Parenthood's job is and what their agenda is in this world. And I think that, to be honest about it, that's why all of us are here, because we have tremendous concern for our fellow men and we are supposed to watch over our brothers and sisters. And also, another thing that I want to talk about, I don't know if I got three minutes? (Inaudible). Anyway, what it is, is that they got this, they call it the pill kills women and babies, and this was at a symponia, symposium, national of 2012, okay? And what it found out is that these pills, these birth control pills that they take, it's a carcinogen and it causes women to die and kill their babies. And if they call it that place at pillkills.com, they will get all the information they want. And I think the city would be great even because that information is available for everyone. You don't have to be religious or whatever your color is or nationality is. It's an information for all women, you know? And I think it wouldn't hurt the city to just have this little packet sitting around for information purposes to help the people here in case somebody's got a question about it. Another thing, the State of California has got a bill that they passed, and it's, they didn't pass it, but they tried to pass it, and it's called, they called it the Environmental Protection Bill. And it's kind of an interesting thing because what they did is they took, the bill was to bring people to do, instead of doctors doing abortions, they were going to have this regular people like, the bill was SB 1338, which would allow nurses, practitioners, certified nurses, midwives, physicians, assistants to perform uterine inspiration abortions, backed by the group of Planned Parenthood and Orel. Okay? And what they did is they took a bill, which I never in my life ever heard of it, but then there's a lot of things I haven't heard about that goes on in the political world, especially in the State of California. They called it, they used a sneaky legislative tactic known as the gut and amend. I've never heard of that, where there would be a bill that's been passed by the senate and they take the guts right out of it and put the information in it for pro-abortion stuff to push their bill through, and that's still stuck in the courts. So I just wanted people that you would be aware of it. I don't, you know, I don't know whether you keep up with all this stuff or whatever. Okay? And also, there's a big, if, there's a lawsuit that's been filed in California because Planned Parenthood had $180 million by this Mr. Gonzalez who worked for Planned Parenthood. He was in charge of their Planned Parenthood financial administration. And this man revealed to the government that this was happening, and that's a lot, a lot of money, $180 million that the taxpayers and the state and the federal government was frauded out of. And I'm just wondering, on an item like that, does the state have a, the city has a right to say, hey, if somebody's going to come into our city and they're in charge of that, would we be liable if we cahoot with them and then have them commit crimes like that? Those are the questions I would just ask. I'm just speaking for myself, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Raymond. I know I do have a card for you under item number 11. Can I assume that those are the same comments that you would make under item number 11?
Item 11, I would just say that my only comment would be that it would be a nuisance, you know, to allow Planned Parenthood to come in in that area, okay, under California state law. Because when Planned Parenthood, when they had that abortion doctor doing abortions in the City of Victorville, we would be out there demonstrating, okay? Trying to give the information to the women, saving the girls as much as we can, and giving the people the information before they went in there, okay? That's what it was. And you see the type of people that are out there and how they get crowded sometimes. That's what I consider a nuisance, because in that area where they're going to put the Planned Parenthood, it's kind of a narrow thing, you know? And they're going to run it down to the bottom, put a big fence and gate up there. You know, I don't know anything about how it's going to go, what's going to be, what kind of traffic it is, because it looks like you've got a small area there. And if you get 30, 40 people standing out there demonstrating a sign, trying to keep people from, giving people information, not trying to stop them and inform them of what's going to be happening, okay? That's what I'm concerned about. And when I say it's a nuisance, because it'll be, as long as they're open, we will be out there. That's all I was going to say.
Thank you. Frank Atkins?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Frank Atkins. I reside in the City of Victorville, and I'm on the ballot for city council, and I will try to be brief today. After our last public meeting, the Daily Press had a couple articles, one about how well our city council does for the people, or should I say, wait a second, it should be about, but it's not. Instead, it's about an ugly verbal feud at the city council meeting. I don't know if all that's the normal way that city councils are run, but it didn't look pretty. I was here. It did not look pretty. That's in the paper there. I'm sure what goes on today will definitely be in probably tomorrow's paper. Also, there was another article about Rudy, something about you broke a conflict of interest law but no prosecution. You know what you did, and still you sit there as the mayor pro term. Are you representing the people? What kind of city council do we really have? Are you really here for the people? That's why I'm on the ballot, and I'm not taking a cent from my campaign effort, whatever it is, is going to be from the people as far as their vote. That's all I need. And if they like the way things are running, keep you all there. If they don't, thank you.
Raymond Herrera?
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. My name is Raymond Herrera, president and founder of We the People Californians Crusader. Mayor, this city council, your most despicable council, city council that I've ever seen in my life. All you people up there who have been against Mrs. Valius are nothing more and nothing less than chauvinist pigs, bullheaded, that don't listen to reason. You've costed the constituents a lot of money in this city. This man right here, I've been here many times accusing him of being a thief, criminal, racist. And you've heard me, Mayor. The district attorney agrees. The people of Victorville agree. $50,000 that Mexican has stolen from the constituents of Victorville. I want it back, and I'm going to get it back, Rudy. The DA, another Hispanic, another Latino, another mapa, lula, la rasa follower like you. Brigade you. I don't. District Attorney Ramos is a pig. He's a racist pig just like you, Rudy.
I'm sorry. I'm not going to put up with that.
It doesn't matter. I got the three minutes, Mayor. You don't have the three minutes. I have.
Sorry.
And I'm coming for you, Rudy. I'm going to file a civil lawsuit against you, and I'm going to get every dime of that back. And each and every one of you up here are going to get voted out.
You do not call our district attorney a pig.
You hear me?
You're out of here.
Yeah?
You're out of here.
I called him a pig.
I'm ordering him out.
Want to hear it again?
Do not call our district attorney a pig.
Ramos is a pig for not prosecuting his criminal.
Please have him removed. I cannot believe you just did that. You did not have to do that. Our district attorney is not a pig. He's elected by the people of this county, and for, anybody to call the district attorney a pig is unbelievable to me. Robin, I assume you're not going to do the same? Because I'll have you removed as well.
Why would you assume I'm going to do the same? Why would you say that to me?
I don't have to answer that. You have your time.
My name's Robin Vizden. I'm also with We the People. And I read in the paper today that the mayor of Upland, for a $5,000 bribe, is going to prison for two years. This does not square with a $50,000 discrepancy defined as breaking the law that is not prosecuted. And just as Mr. Herrera said, he's going to seek outside sources to bring this forward. The people, that's the people's money that was taken from them, and it needs to be returned to the people. We would like to also point out that we have asked this body politic to not sponsor Cinco de Mayo, which is, you partner with the High Desert Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and you use city vehicles, storage, signs, et cetera. And we will, again, this year, especially after this lawbreaking, ask this body politic to not support and spend the people's money on that event that celebrates another country. And again, just like Mr. Herrera said, other avenues need to be explored. That money needs to be returned to the people. It was lawbreaking.
All right, thank you. That is all the cards I have under general public comment. We'll now move into the rest of our agenda under the Library Board of Trustees. There were no items at the time of posting. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, again, no items at the time of posting. Under the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Agenda Item Number Seven, this is a request to, one, approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $111,675.75 for the SCLA Power Supply System Replacement and Fire Damage Repair Project, and, two, award a contract to Electronic Environment in the amount of $84,779 from said appropriation, and, three, award a contract in the amount of $6,080 to Piero First Fire and Water Restoration from said appropriation.
I have a question. The fiscal impact is $111,000, but the budget amount is zero, and the total budget amount in the account is zero, and the remaining balance is zero. But then it does talk about additional appropriation, but then on the back page, it talks about like insurance reimbursement, so I'm not quite sure if the city manager can explain it.
Actually, this is Mr. Metzler's item. I could explain it, but he can explain it better than I, has more detail. Mr. Metzler?
Yes, Councilman Vias and members of the council, this item is an insurance proceeds claim, and the reason for the zeros in the budgeted account categories is largely because we weren't complete with the actual reconciliation process with the insurance company to actually satisfy the job to be done. It's been an ongoing process since the fire damage occurred, and it wasn't something we believed was appropriate at the time to speculate as to what the actual dollar amounts were going to be awarded from the insurance company to cover the expenses. So what you have here is an item dealing, as it appears, with a strict appropriation of funds. But in fact, what we have done already, we have received funds from the insurance company to the order of $84,715. And the remainder amount or the difference between what we received and what this total appropriation amount is for is actually available to us on a reimbursement basis. We've actually been approved for that amount up to $11,675. So the funds received through the insurance claim process will offset the entire appropriation amount.
So no costs to the city?
No net costs once the project's done.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Eight, which is under the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, is a request to approve the settlement agreement relating to the Bear Valley Associates Owner Participation Agreement, the OPA. Mr. Metzler?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this item is being brought to you in your capacity as a successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. Staff has provided a fairly detailed write-up as there was a very involved history associated with this project. This item has been brought to you as an impending threat of litigation. This is what staff has actually worked out with the proponent of the project and also the bank associated with the project. And very basically, what it's asking us to do is approve a settlement agreement and seek that settlement agreement to be approved through the whole dissolution process where effectively, as a function of the settlement, you'll be receiving the amounts identified in the staff report. I believe the settlement amount is about $55,000. That amount, in essence, once through the dissolution process then becomes available to satisfy enforceable obligations of the former redevelopment agency, and to the extent enforceable obligations have been satisfied, then in theory, those monies could be made available to the affected taxing agencies.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
There were no items at the time of posting for the Joint Powers Financing Authority. Moving on to the Victorville Water District, Agenda Item Number Nine is a request to approve a purchase order request for Mojave Basin Area Water Master for quarterly water production reports and invoices for administrative and biological assessments for fiscal year 2012, 2013 in the amount of $100,000.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Ten is a request to approve the annual purchase order request for water well maintenance in the amount of $200,000 for fiscal year 2012, 2013, and that the board approve a contract extension until June 20th, 2013.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
The City Council Performing Housing Functions of the former RDA, there were no items at the time of posting, so we'll now move on to the City Council. And Agenda Item Number Eleven, this is an appeal hearing to hear two appeals to the City Council concerning the zoning administrator's approval of Case ADM 12-00037, a minor site plan modification to allow for building exterior improvements and parking lot alterations to an existing development on property located at 15403 Park Avenue. Appellants are Lisa Hayes, founder of Concerned Citizens of the High Desert, as set forth in Resolution Number 12-040, and award-winning design for Robert Lervy Jr. as set forth in Resolution Number 12-041. And those resolutions are listed out on our agenda. Again, these, this is an appeal hearing. It is a public hearing. At this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing.
Conflict. I have conflict that rose before this even rose to the council level. I have several ministers in this community, plus Pastor Porus is number one of them. I have to be conflicted out of this thing.
Can you state the reason? Is it because of bias?
The reason is bias.
Mr. Mayor, as Councilmember Rothschild leaves, I just want to, for the public's information, two gentlemen just entered and sitting at the dais rather than trying to find a seat in the crowded auditorium. On the very end is Bill Webb, the Development Director, and to his right is Chris Portchert, who is the city planner and zoning administrator.
All right. In order to administrate this properly, normally, we would allow three minutes for each speaker. Tonight, unfortunately, with the number of cards I've got, there's just no way that we're going to be able to do that. So I'm going to try to limit this to two minutes per speaker. I've got my mayor pro tim who will help me out with timekeeping, but I do want to allow the appellants the opportunity to speak and before the council, and also the applicant that opportunity to respond, and then at that point, we will get into the cards that I have. So the two appellants are Lisa Hayes, as well as Robert Lervy. Are either of them here or a representative on their behalf wishing to speak to the council.
Mayor McEckern, I just wanted to point out for the record, there have been allegations of bias from other council members, but it's your decision as to whether or not to participate.
So noted. Which would prefer to go first, Lisa or Robert? Robert?
Yeah.
City Attorney, can you please repeat?
City Attorney, can you please repeat the last statement that you made?
Yeah, there have been allegations made that certain council members have bias in this quasi-judicial proceeding, and it's up to the council members to determine whether or not they believe they have a bias, not me.
Okay, thank you, sir. Honorable council members, I'm Robert Lervie, representing myself through my company, Award Winning Design. And the first thing I wanted to address is the eligibility of the council members. I was in possession, as of last week, of Planned Parenthood's letter of opposition claiming ineligibility of Councilmember Vias and Mayor McCacken to be able to vote on this issue. We then rebutted that with a letter questioning Mr. Kennedy's eligibility based upon public comment. You know, at this point, I really don't see any point on proceeding with a vote until we've cleared up the issue of eligibility. And I defer to you to make a comment on that.
It's a determination by the council members as to whether they feel they are biased, that they can act. They're sitting as a quasi-judicial body right now. The issue right now before them is to determine whether or not the Planning Commission and before that, the zoning administrator were justified in their decision-making process.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, sir. Touchy subject this whole thing has become, but I want to state for the record right off the bat that I'm not here to address a political issue about the moral implications of abortion and whatnot. I've been in the business of construction and architecture for over 30 years. I've dealt with a number of governing agencies throughout Southern California, the continental United States, and abroad on planning issues, building code issues, zoning issues. I have dealt with a lot of things, and the one thing I have learned, planning departments make mistakes. And when I reviewed this, I looked at this and I said, you know what? This is just people's opinion against opinion, and that brings me back to the whole response by the opposition that I received last week. And all I read in the opposition's letter and staff's comments is a bunch of legal rhetoric. And what I refer to as legal rhetoric is just, I hear one thing coming out this direction and this coming out another direction. For example, in staff's report, if you take staff's report and you compare it line by line to each objection that I've made concerning the approval of the site plan, staff didn't address every one of them. They just tried to jumble it all together in one ball of wax and say, well, you know, it has no merit. I believe it has merit. Excuse me, if I... I believe strongly it has merit simply based upon the line-by-line opposition. And, you know, starting with what happened on June 13 in this room with the Planning Commission, things were conducted in a very disorderly manner. People weren't given the appropriate amount of time to speak. Staff makes a comment that Leslie Bradley, the agent for the applicant, had opportunity to speak. No, she spoke not as the agent of the applicant, she spoke as a personal individual. When I went to speak, I spoke, I thought, on behalf of Dennis Morris of Moses House, who told me he was appointed by appellant McCacken to speak on his behalf, and Mr. Morris asked me to speak on the appellant's application's behalf. I was never given the opportunity to adequately respond to staff's comments. And I think that's something we need to determine here. According to the municipal code, if, as I understand it and read it here, and I don't think these codes should be written so that only lawyers can understand them. I think they should be written so that everyone can understand them. And I think having the education level that I do, that I clearly understand the English language, that if new information comes to the attention of the council, that this matter has to be sent back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration. So that's the first thing we need to consider here. The second thing is the development code in a whole. In Chapter One, Article One, the general provisions, Section 16-0.1, .01, .020, purpose and objectives of the development code. The Development Department is charged with the implementation, maintenance, and enforcement of the development code. It is a multi-disciplined department that integrates planning, building code enforcement, engineering plan check, and fire prevention services, and to provide maximum efficiency while ensuring quality and safe development. When I read staff's response tonight, oh, the code is written to be broad and allow for a broad interpretation, but yet, in their own response, they claim, oh, we have to be really narrow-minded. You know, when this project came before staff, staff had a responsibility to consider, by law, they have a responsibility to consider the whole of the code, not just bits and pieces of it, the whole of the code. And I think very clearly stated in my appeal, that was not done. Prime example is I read some of the staff's preliminary reports that recommended or told the applicant that they needed to fix the trash enclosure. They need to remove a sign that's illegal. They needed to do something else, all per the development code. But yet, in that particular section of the development code, there are four things, and they chose to apply three, but neglected to apply the fourth one, which is the consideration of views from neighboring properties. In staff's report, they, to me, didn't read my appeal very carefully. They tried to just excuse that objection as being something political about people exercising their First Amendment rights. But if we're going to apply this section of the code, and we're going to make them come up to code with the signs, that they're going to come up to code with the trash enclosures, then the views upon neighbors is applicable, and nowhere in the applicant's submittal is there anything, there's nowhere in any of staff's reports or notes, anything that deals with the issue of neighboring views. Where's the consideration of the existing businesses in the area? Now, instead of belaboring this and trying to go through this point by point in my appeal, the first part of my appeal basically addresses the issue of the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff says that it's ministerial, not discretionary. The opposition letter from the appellant, I mean, excuse me, the applicant states that it's ministerial, not discretionary. Well, as far as I understand, what the California Environmental Quality Act states, it states that "The CEQA was intended to be interpreted in such a manner as to afford the fullest possible protection to the environment within the reasonable scope of the statutory language." Again, it says, "The purpose of the CEQA is not to generate paper, but to compel government at all levels to make decisions with environmental consequences in mind." I don't think our planning staff did that. I think the case that the city of Costa Mesa, and I believe Lake Forest went through in terms of medicinal marijuana dispensaries, is pretty clear that planning departments have a responsibility to look at the nature of a business when they make application to enter the boundaries of a city, or the city that they work for, to determine those factors. I don't think the CEQA was developed when they created the exemption standards. They weren't there to just try to slide the rest of the law. I mean, the CEQA, the state provides a clearinghouse agency in which cities can submit projects to get the state's opinion on this. I don't see anything reported by staff that this was done, especially on the knowledge of the reputation of the applicant, nature of business, just if it were to be a medicinal marijuana dispensary facility or not. The other issue here is the site plan itself has flaws in it. Again, as I quoted the municipal code, it states that they have a responsibility to uphold the code. The site plan is in violation of the fire code. I doubt that staff even knows that. I've prepared some additional exhibits for staff and the council to review, and it clearly states, it clearly shows on one of these that there's not adequate fire truck access. Because there's not adequate fire truck access onto the property or off the property, it then impedes upon parking spaces that would be, needed to be eliminated. Now raises the question whether or not the project has adequate parking. You know, like I said, I've been doing this for 30 years. Planning departments make mistakes. I'm not here to condemn those that are working in our planning department. They're human beings, they make mistakes. It is impossible for them to know every code. You have to deal with the fire code, the electrical code, the plumbing code, the ADA codes, the building codes, zoning codes. It's just, it's a lot for one person to know. And I've been doing this for 30 years, and I'll tell you right off the bat, I'm not arrogant or proud enough to know that I, to say that I know it all. But I did my homework, and I studied this issue. This site plan just isn't approvable because it doesn't meet the code requirements. Part of the responsibility for determining projects in a city, or let me just back up and say this, I mean, I want to, for the record, I believe, I strongly believe, and I believe there's case law out there, I believe the government law supports that, that cities have the right to determine what businesses can practice within their boundaries. You have the cases across the country of Walmarts. People don't want Walmarts in their communities because they feel strongly that Walmart's going to take away jobs, that Walmart is going to put small businesses out of business. And if cities don't have the right, if our elected officials don't have that right to say no, then where are our rights?
All right. Robert, if I could ask you to bring your comments to a close.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
If I could ask you to bring your comments to a close.
Yes, sir. And I do salute you, because I don't envy any of you, because this is a difficult decision. But you do have my support, each one of you. I may disagree with some of the things you do or say, but you have my support because you are my elected officials that represent me. But in closing, there's also some other considerations, just as I mentioned Walmart having an impact economically on a community and thus being kept out of the community. Planned Parenthood is going to have a negative impact on this community financially. And it's going to have a negative impact because one of the things I have in the exhibits that I'll hand the city clerk to pass out is that we surveyed all of the, as many of the medical facilities we can that provide the similar, the same services as Planned Parenthood wants to provide here in the city. You know, and that leads me to a point. I mean, how can you even allow a business to come into your city? A business with, has a bad reputation, a business that has a reputation in manipulating statistics. The council received statistical information last week. Well, I've got statistical information, too. And I'll show you how they manipulate statistics. On their website, they like to show that a certain percentage of their business is this. Well, anybody that knows elementary math knows that. Those statistics are based upon the total number of facilities they have. But not every one of their facilities offers the services that they claim to offer. Thus, if they say they have 6% services they offer here, and they only offer them at half their facilities, that 6% becomes 12%. I mean, let's just be honest. I'm here because, not because of a political issue, I'm here because I've been doing this for 30 years. The planning, the planning department erred gravely. The facts are there. And I'm asking this council to make their decision, not on a political bias or a political idea. I'm asking you to make this decision based on your responsibility to uphold the municipal code and development code of this city, number one. Number two, I'm asking you to do this because it's the right thing to do, because if we don't abide by our local ordinances and codes, and we want to pick and choose which ones we can follow and which one we can't follow, then why do we even have you guys here, and why do we even have any rules at all? I mean, I've been doing this a long time, and I've been on that side of the, I've been on that side of the client, which I am most of the time, where I'm trying to get projects approved. And I know how EIRs work, and I know how all these things work. You know, the staff wants to claim, well, we don't have an opinion, and we can't, they're exercising their opinion. I don't want this council to be influenced by attorneys either. You, according to this code, you know, things come to you guys. You know, they go through the zoning administrator. If you're not sure about what something means in the code, you can write the zoning administrator for an interpretation. And then if you disagree with the zoning administrator's determination or interpretation, then you can appeal that to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission's supposed to make the determination as to what the interpretation of the code is. And then if you disagree with the Planning Commission's decision, then you appeal it to the City Council. So the City Council needs to be making these decisions, not the lawyers, because all you have from the lawyers is opinions. They're not adjudicators. They do not sit on the bench judging the application of the law. You get the attorney for one side, the attorney for the other side, and all they do is going to tell you what favors their client. Come on, we know how it works, let's just be smart, and let's not do this. I mean, this whole thing, I mean, the city's got a lawsuit faced on its hands, and that's ridiculous. I mean, I really would like to even give the applicant the opportunity to withdraw their application tonight.
Okay, Robert, I need to...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time.
I've given you way more than the time that you were allotted at Planning Commission.
And I'm sure I forgot half the things I wanted to say, but you have it there.
And just so everyone's aware, the appellants are being given more time, as well as the applicant will be given the same amount of time. So I'm only applying the two-minute rule to everyone else. So with that, Lisa, and if you could limit your comments to anything and everything other than what Robert said, or just concur with him on those items that you do concur with him on, I'd appreciate it.
I concur, but I wrote what I was going to say, so I'll try not to get off topic. Thank you for hearing our appeal, Mayor, and council members and everybody else, and thank you to everybody who showed up. I'm not the best public speaker, so I'll do my best. That's why I wrote it. I'm really nervous right now. I did bring an attorney. Hope that doesn't bother you, Robert. And when I'm done speaking, and he's going to wrap it up for me, Thomas Jefferson said, "When injustice becomes law, then resistance becomes duty." Now, tonight, we're going to talk about the Planned Parenthood Federation of America's compound. This is not about abortion, it's about zoning, and who's going to pay for the cost of the nonprofit's compound? This whole business plan stinks, it doesn't make any sense, it's confusing... This whole business plan stinks, it doesn't make any sense, it's confusing, really. People need and want open access to and from businesses, freely coming and going, and this compound with a seven-foot-high block wall and security fencing doesn't fit the neighborhood. I respectfully ask, insist, demand that this site plan modification be denied and our appeal be granted. Planned Parenthood's threat of legal action and harassment of the city, of Victorville city officials and anyone else who exposes them must be opposed. Planned Parenthood actions show that Planned Parenthood is a rich bully who wants to take advantage of an impoverished, impoverished Victorville city government and people who live in the area. Massive economic loss for the city of Victorville. There'll be loss of tax income for the city. Previous tenant was a restaurant, a revenue generator, and a furniture store, another revenue generator. Planned Parenthood is a nonprofit, no tax revenue for the financially strapped city. In fact, they get reduced permit fees, et cetera, for being a nonprofit 501(c)(3). Even though the records show they net $63 million in profits in 2009, that's the latest reports available, and over 3.2 million is directly from the Orange and San Bernardino County facilities. Press dispatch reported Sunday, June 2nd, 2012, that the city has dwindling reserves and used 275,000 of it to pay out employees quitting and cashing out on their benefits packages. The following day, the press dispatch reported, i.e., poor for business, survey says. The article from staff reports states that the inland empire and the desert regions are second worst regions in California for businesses. Yet you're considering giving a permit to a business that will suck the coffers dry and not contribute anything back. The city needs to bring in tax-based businesses, not taxpayer-sucking businesses. They may start demanding special ordinances for bubble zones, they'll be demanding a lot of expensive police time to carry out the special laws and ordinances in which Planned Parenthood demands. They take, 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 and what do they leave behind? Certainly no tax revenue. The federation received $1.5 million grant from the state of California for this project, taxpayer money, but what are they giving back, besides diseases and broken hearts? What other business in town gets free money to operate and then make a huge profit on top of that? Currently, Planned Parenthood Federation of America is being investigated by the federal government for engaging in massive fraud and overbilling of taxpayer funds on numerous accounts, and I have printouts to prove it, articles. So this town, is it a safe haven for those businesses that overcharge the government for services never performed? What kind of city government do we have if we allow this? The site plan submitted by Planned Parenthood shows that they plan to put a knockbox on their gate, which shows they already have, expect, they already expect special services from the city of Victorville Police and Fire Department. The site plan modification must be denied, this appeal must be granted. Currently, the city interfered with the sale of a property on Palmdale Road because it's Zone C2, and the buyer was a 501(c)(3), not a tax-generating business. The city basically said, nope, can't go there, we're looking for tax money, and you can't put your nonprofit in the C2. So the city is discriminating on one nonprofit, yet is attempting to give a powerhouse multimillion-dollar nonprofit the go-ahead. For what? Some Victorville officials, utility workers, and police and fire department members may have very strong moral conscience objections to providing assistance and service to a death camp where babies are killed and laws about protecting young people are violated. Victorville would become a magnet for crime reporting. Planned Parenthood is a mandatory reporter for child abuse, neglect, sex crimes, sex crimes, hemic trafficking, et cetera. Will they report? History shows they probably won't, so that's not an extra cost there, but it may be a site for violent confrontations with family members and friends over abortions. In the Palm Springs area, there was a shooting in one of their abortion businesses. In Sacramento, police had to go into Planned Parenthood abortion clinic to break up a fight among several people and patients. In Sacramento, other tenants and neighboring offices to a Planned Parenthood clinic complained about the violence caused by the people at the Planned Parenthood clinic for abortions. These were not the peaceful pro-life pickets or sidewalk counselors, but rather boyfriends and family members, or friends who were angry about abortions killing family members, et cetera. Victorville will incur cost of investigating all these cases. How will the city pay for this? Has case study been done to show the cost of an investigation? None's in this application. Now, usually you promote something to create business. Planned Parenthood is directly promoting promiscuity amongst our naive youth, therefore creating the business of treating STDs as something they call unwanted pregnancies. The high desert community reflects the views of many in our state and nation, in its concern over how Planned Parenthood treats underage girls and women. This Planned Parenthood compound will attract frequent protest. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with 40 Days for Life, but that starts September 26th this year and runs through November 4th this season, and it happens twice a year. So that's at a minimum, right now. Now policing expenses, how will the city of Victorville pay for the increased policing required to protect the protesters while they exercise their First Amendment rights? What toll will these protests take on neighboring businesses? Will a new tenant ever be found for the shopping center anchor Target with these protests a block away? How will the city of Victorville pay to manage the traffic and parking problems caused by Planned Parenthood's 20,000 clients per year and much of the general public in this small space? Traffic problems have not been responsibly studied. How will they be mitigated, and who will pay for this? Again, an application that doesn't make any sense. This site plan modification must be denied, our appeal must be granted. And I'm halfway done. Public safety concerns. Entrance and egress for vehicles is a single lane. In an emergency, it is unclear that a fire truck could maneuver through the parking lot, let alone additional emergency vehicles like ambulance and police. How will the young girls and women inside the compound be protected? How do they get out safely? What if there's a fire? And if there's a car stalled in that iron gate entryway, you expect half-naked women to crawl a seven-foot wall? Or are they going to run on the freeway? Clients will experience serious health complications and will sue, perhaps the city of Victorville. What security requirements will be placed on Planned Parenthood? The compound clearly anticipates security issues with its proposed seven-foot wall, security fencing, and surveillance cameras. How many $90-an-hour trained security guards will the planning commission require them to employ 24/7 in order to protect their compound and neighboring businesses? Two to four would be the minimum acceptable, and they must protect and provide safety for the general public as well. With a seven-foot block wall, security fencing, and cameras galore, this seems extreme for a learning facility, for a clinic. And to say they need these to protect life within the structure while they kill life within the structure makes no sense. With all the domestic disputes that occur in demonstrations, this is too public for such a private event. The application's incomplete. How can planning commission sign off on a site plan that gives very limited disclosure? Was this truly investigated? It is not obvious to us that this has been thoroughly investigated. Planned Parenthood describes its compound as general commercial. Really? Wouldn't that generally mean they're selling something? It doesn't fit into the neighborhood, it's not complementary to the surrounding businesses, which are generally family retail-type businesses who are afraid of all the picketing and protests will negatively affect their businesses, and in turn will directly affect the tax base. And with Target wanting to move out of this neighborhood, the neighborhood will be blighted further. For this so-called education center, has anyone seen proof for an example of the curriculum? And who has the authority to review and approve such teachings? Planned Parenthood describes its compound as an education center, so why a room for a surgery? Why is abortion experience listed as a job requirement for staff? Yes, it may be legal, but they say they don't plan on doing abortions at this clinic or even procedures in the near term. They're lying to gain public support. They state they want to make a community medical clinic that should have free, that should have free access to and fro for all the public, not just clients. Just like any other doctor's office in the high desert, Victor Valley Hospital, Desert Valley Hospital, St. Mary's Hospital, any number of urgent cares, they all offer ease of access. Plan refers vaguely to future plans as a primary care facility. City cannot grant a permit without knowing full future intent of Planned Parenthood. What kind of procedures will be performed, on how many people? This permit should be for a primary care facility, and if this were the case, a doctor's office is a public facility which doesn't require a seven-foot wall and security fencing and double entry doors. This compound should have easy access, not only to its clients and family members, but friends and general public as well. If this were a true medical facility, the city must insist a licensed doctor registered in the state of California be on the premises during the hours of operation. And if they do anything regarding a female's reproductive rights, the doctor must be an OBGYN, licensed in the state of California, with privileges at a local emergency room. There have been too many cases where women die from botched abortions, and the latest one that garnered national attention was Tanya Reeves just a few weeks ago. The city cannot allow a business to come in under the guise of education and later turn itself into a medical facility. What would, that would be like me opening up a donut shop, and next month, voila, it's a massage parlor, which, which is a legal business, but highly regulated. How will sanitation be addressed? Will there be medical waste, radioactive waste? What are the plans for legal and healthful disposal? None was given, again, an incomplete application, and an incomplete investigation by the planning department. Planned Parenthood needs to make full disclosure of its future plans, or that part of the permit needs to be stricken. Planned Parenthood, Orange and San Bernardino Counties Incorporated, based out of Orange, California, does abortions in 100% of their facilities, so they obviously plan to do them here, which would be legal, but why hide the fact that they want to kill our babies? They are deceiving the public to gain support. The city cannot determine what the ordinances of tomorrow will be. Building and safety codes, and health and safety codes are much different today than they were five, 10, 15 years ago. There is no reasonable way the city can allow this site plan based on a future element. How often will the health department go in and inspect? What about medical waste? This is not even in the proposal. Environmental report not included in the application. What about sewer and drainage impact? Any reports on that? Environmental problems like disposal of baby bodies and other medical waste. For example, in Sacramento, the sewer line near an abortion business was clogged with baby bodies. They must be denied. Traffic impact report has not been done, and according to their own website, they're expecting over 20,000 clients per year. It's amazing that the majority of Americans still think of Planned Parenthood as an organization that actually serves the health interest of the poor, and women in particular. While that's a nice platitude, the facts are quite different. Did you know that Planned Parenthood operates a website for adolescents that's been described as lewd and obscene? If you or I talk to children the way they educate them, we'd get hauled off for being a pervert. And if you put your arm around the child while showing the federation's material, you would be charged with child molestation, but not Planned Parenthood. They do it under the farce of education. Planned Parenthood is not interested in the health and welfare of Americans. Planned Parenthood refers to advocate, prefers to advocate promiscuity, even though such behavior results in sexually transmitted diseases, broken hearts, and dead babies. Planned Parenthood is not effective in lowering STD rates. One in four females under the age of 25 now have an STD. Chlamydia is the highest it's ever been since the 1950s. 3.2 million teenage girls between the age of 14 and 19 have at least one of four different sexually transmitted diseases, despite millions of tax dollars given to comprehensive sex education and preventive methods given by Planned Parenthood. It's about time that American citizens understood what is at stake when a Planned Parenthood facility operates in the community or when its volunteers teach in a classroom. Planned Parenthood promotes sexual permissiveness, not self-control, not dignity, not respect. In 1960, 6% of all babies born in the U.S. were born out of wedlock. Today, according to the New York Times, May 13th, the number's 66%. Where there is solid family stability, there is solid financial stability in a community, and that includes a tax base for the local governments. This site plan modification must be denied to anyone claiming to be good for the community while facts tell they are not. Planned Parenthood works against parental involvement and freedom of conscience. There is nothing good about the main focus of Planned Parenthood's efforts. There is a great deal of malice towards the citizens that result from those efforts. It's time to tell the truth. Planned Parenthood is not a respectable organization, and its services only contribute to public nuisance. What about odors? Has a report been done on that? Dead babies probably don't smell too good after a while, and definitely not with Korean barbecue and cocos. That is definitely not complementary to this neighborhood. The site plan modification must be denied and the appeal granted. The Planned Parenthood business will be what is called an attractive nuisance, which will cause problems attracting vulnerable young people, prostitutes, sex traffickers, sex abusers, and others who want free taxpayer-funded birth control drugs and devices, treatments for sexually transmitted diseases and abortions, disturbing neighboring businesses with police and ambulance calls. Some people will say, well, what about Kaiser? Well, Kaiser's only medical offices, they don't perform abortions. Most medical offices send you to a hospital if you miscarry, and of course, you'll be seen by an appropriate licensed doctor. Furthermore, any procedure that renders patients incapable of self-preservation will place the building, I know that's a building, not site plan, but we'll throw it in there, into I-2.1 occupancy category, which requires a 5A minimum construction. Nothing on record at the city shows the building meets this type of construction. The site plan modification must be denied and our appeal granted. A request has been made to see the updated plans, yet they are not complete, rendering them unavailable for viewing. So who knows what else is in store? It would be best if the city council members decide they need time to research and study all the testimony presented. A city council member should then make a motion to place this issue on agenda of a future council meeting, after the council members have had time to study and investigate the many issues raised at this meeting. The city council members are protectors of the general welfare of the community. You have an obligation to protect the community. You may have been having phone and emails inundated with people stating opposition to my appeal. Are any of them here? I have over 1,000 signatures of concerned citizens right here. Pink papers, 1,000 signatures, actual people who live in the high desert. Trying to stop, oh wait, let's see. I have over 1,000 signatures of concerned citizens right here. We are not trying to stop, step on someone's rights. We ask the city to move forward carefully and slowly, examine everything before allowing such a controversial business in town. Wouldn't you do this for a massage parlor or a nightclub? And now, my attorney's going to speak.
Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, Greg Wyler, law firm of Paul Mary Tyler, Weiner Wilhelm and Waldron from Irvine, right down the street from Planned Parenthood's council, who's going to speak later tonight. You have a very difficult job for you tonight because you're charged with protecting the rights of Planned Parenthood, a property owner potentially in the city, and then also the residents, and you're here on the most emotionally charged issue of our day. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the legalities and maybe the bona fides that I might bring. See, I've represented, represented concerned citizens in Redwood City, Monrovia, Thousand Oaks, sort of a passion of mine on these property rights issues. But at the same time, I represent and have many of the largest home builders and developers in the, in the nation. I know property rights. I know the state development law, I know the subdivision map act, and boy, do I know SEQA. I've worked with the city in the past, and the staff is, is really superb, and don't think they're up to par on this one, but Mr. Borchardt's always been very helpful, as well as the rest of the staff. The reason I say this to you is because I'm going to talk to you really quickly about the law and try to keep you out of hot water. See, you have threats from these folks, these patent leather shoe guys like me that come to the city, come to the high desert and tell you what you're going to do and what you have to do, or they're going to sue you. And you've seen the letter from Planned Parenthood, it was kind of brutal in its threats to you. They kind of told you, you didn't know what you were doing, and if you do this, you're going to get sued personally for civil rights violations. I kind of find that not really a persuasive way to sell an argument, but apparently the folks at Planned Parenthood think that's good up in the city of Victorville. But my job is to allow you to protect the interests of the city and still have respect for Planned Parenthood's position. I disagree with Robert. I mean, I don't think that a city council should willy-nilly have been able to deny a property owner the right to do anything with their property. But I do think the city can require compliance with their law, and that's what we're urging you to do tonight. I'm going to point out just a couple of things that I think support the appellant's position. Our position's pretty clear, that this site plan approval under your code isn't just a little ministerial building permit stamp they get to go in there. I'm going to cite you the words from your code, and then you decide yourself whether your, the words I read you in your code are right. your, the words I read you in your code are right, or the conclusions of Planned Parenthood and your staff are right. Get to that in a minute. And then, if it is discretionary, they should do an environmental analysis that reviews in detail with professionals all the concerns raised by Lisa and these good folks that are going to speak to you tonight. All these health and safety concerns should be analyzed, especially, especially when you have the greatest issue facing our nation today, and especially when you have the, the health and safety code violations, issues that have been raised, and especially when you have somebody who, I think the record, and you can take public notice as a council, that may not be the best corporate citizen that you can bring to your town. Even bad corporate citizens have the right to come to your town, and their constitutional rights need to be protected, even Planned Parenthood. But you, as a council, should really look long and hard and do everything you can under the law to protect the citizens. We’re not asking you to do anything that’s illegal. We just want you to look at your code, look at the state law, and apply it in a way that will protect the citizens. So with that done, with that said, a ministerial project is exempt, and they urge you to say it’s ministerial. I’m going to read you your code section right now, and you tell me whether or not the zoning administrator, the planning commission, has any discretion when I read you the words from your code. If I can read it so small. Where a site plan review is required for use or a structure under the provisions of this article, the following aspects of the project are to be reviewed by the zoning administrator and the planning commission, are to be reviewed. Now, I don’t know if that means just read, but reviewed to me seems to imply that they have the authority to do something with it. And here’s the first two from Section 16.031 of your code, subsection A and B. The location of the site in relation to the location of buildings on adjoining sites, with particular attention to privacy views and physical constraint identified on the site plan and the characteristics of the area. B, the degree to which the proposed development will complement and/or improve upon the quality of existing development in the vicinity of the proposed project and to the extent in which adverse impacts to surrounding properties will be minimized. Now, give me a break. That’s the broadest type of discretion, and that’s in your site plan approval. Now, the staff, and I’m surprised, and Planned Parenthood’s right with them, are saying, “It’s a site plan. It’s ministerial. It’s exempt.” California law doesn’t provide that. It can state, “It’s a building permit, a site plan, a kangaroo,” but if discretion’s involved, it’s not ministerial, and SEQA is implicated. SEQA meaning you guys get to require whatever SEQA compliance you want, a negative declaration and full environmental impact report, but it is farcical for them to state that those two sections don’t give you discretion, don’t give the city discretion. So what I’m urging you to find here is this permit is ministerial, triggering SEQA compliance. And then you can have a full review of these issues and be, and a position to make an informed decision, an informed decision on this permit, on this application. And to not, for Planned Parenthood to threaten you, saying it’s civil rights violations if they, if they have to do an environmental impact report, well, that is, that is a legal loser. They’re probably still going to sue you, but to state that you’re, you’re going to be deprived of an informed decision, I think that’s an outrage and certainly an insult to the folks that they ostensibly want to serve. I’m going to finish up here. The second part of the staff report says that no findings are necessary. Well, that’s absurd also. Whenever there’s discretion, and they have to state whether they review something, they have to say they reviewed it, and they’ve made a conclusion, and the conclusion under California law has to be supported by facts and the record, and there has to be a logical connection. But they’re saying, “No, it’s a site plan, so we don’t have to have any findings. We don’t have to do anything.” I mean, that is, I, I just strongly disagree, and I think that’s a legal loser for you too. But again, you have to rely on your city attorney. Again, I’ve already talked about the threats to this council. Planned Parenthood argues that we’re, that, that the appellant’s are urging discrimination against Planned Parenthood. We’re not urging discrimination. We’re applying, we are, we’re asking for the uniform application of the law, the city’s code. Yeah, the city is supposed to be discriminatory. They’re supposed to discriminate in favor of the citizens of the city of Victorville and in favor of the uniform enforcement of their law? And I would respectfully submit that you’re supposed to discriminate against applicants who are trying to shortcut the environmental review process, and also to, to ask for an approval that’s not supported by facts and the record. So yeah, be discriminating. Not in the bad sense, but in the best sense of the word. And the real, the real issue for you comes down to whether this council has the will to properly review this, this application. Legally, you can. You can go and, and, and say yes to the staff report, which is just boilerplate, you know, “This is a site plan, and we don’t have any discretion.” But I’ve already pointed out, that’s absurd. You do have discretion. And if you have the will, I think with sound legal advice, and certainly the facts and the record presented at your hearing tonight, you can either deny this application and say, “No, the findings aren’t there. Go back and start over again, Planned Parenthood,” or send it back to the zoning administrator and the planning commission and say, “Do it right. Do, determine what the appropriate SEQA compliance is, and then do it, and we’ll see you at the end of the day after you’ve done it right.” Either of those, deny it with appropriate findings, or send it back. But right now, it’s improper, and you’re certainly not using the degree of scrutiny that you should, especially for, for this corporate citizen and for this use. I think that’s all I have to say. So if you have any questions regarding the letter I submitted to you earlier, I’m happy to answer those later on, and we’d like to have the ability to rebut the appellant to the extent that it’s necessary. Thank you.
All right, I’m going to give the applicant or, and/or their representative an opportunity to respond to the appellant at this point in time.
My name is Chris Spiker. I’m an attorney with Gibson, Dunn &amp; Crutch, appearing on behalf of Planned Parenthood tonight. I’d like to thank people-
Speak into the microphone, please.
Sorry, can you not hear me? Is that better? Okay, thanks. I apologize. To start off, I’d just like to reiterate for the record our objection to the participation of Mayor McEckern and Councilwoman Baez in this proceeding, given their public statements and bias against our client. Let’s start with Ms. Hayes’ appeal. Under the code, she lacks standing to appeal this permit. She tacitly admits in her, in her appeal that she is, well, first of all, she’s not the applicant for the permit. She owns no property here, in Victorville, and she is not, she does not live here. Those are what you need for standing, to appeal an application, a permit application. She does not meet it, therefore, we urge the council to reject her appeal for lack of standing. Now, the appellant’s here would lead you down a dangerous course. They ask you to apply SEQA, to apply SEQA to our, our permit. Under longstanding and clear California authority, SEQA does not apply to this permit. On its very face, SEQA does not apply to ministerial projects, meaning those whose approval or implementation involves little or no personal judgment. Small building permits such as this, that we’re saying that Planned Parenthood is seeking, are the quintessential ministerial application, ministerial decision. Under SEQA, it cannot, it simply does not apply on its very face. Nothing that the appellant’s have brought up changes that fact. The issue before this court, or before this council is, is very narrow. It’s simply whether the application, the site plan modification, meets the very basic requirements set out in Victorville Code, and it does. Both the zoning administrator and later the planning council found that very, found that it applied, that it met all the requirements. Now, it appears that the appellant’s and appellate’s counsel, they confound the meaning of ministerial or discretionary. A determination of whether an action is ministerial or discretionary does not turn on, it turns on whether the criteria for making that determination is objective, such as, “Does this permit meet all the requirements in the code? Or does it turn on, or is this a determination based on subjective factors?” In this case, it’s very clear. A site plan modification, a site modification plan only turns on objective standards, on, “Does it meet the code or not?” And in this case, it’s absolutely clear that it’s ministerial. Now, even if this council incorrectly finds that it was not ministerial, SEQA does not apply for a second independent reason. Under Section 15301 of the SEQA guidelines, a minor alteration to an existing public or private structure involving negligible or no expansion of use beyond that existing of the time of the lead agency’s determination does not trigger SEQA review. There’s no dispute here that the facility at question is our, is a previously existing facility, that the alterations proposed by Planned Parenthood are minor in nature. It’s putting on a new roof. It’s fixing up the walkways, the parking lot, fixing up the interior of a building. By its very definition, these are minor alterations to a previously existing building, and thus are exempt under SEQA. Now, the appellant’s may and have attempted to argue that, that the site plan modification, the site modification plan falls under a, an exception to this general exemption. They try and, they argue that there is a, that it’s a nuisance, that this thing, there’s special circumstances. Yet, they cannot reach, they present no evidence in support of that claim. Whereas here, a permit has been issued, you can only find, you have to show, you have to show that this, this exception would apply under the burden of substantial evidence. They bear the burden of proof, substantial evidence that these, and they cannot do that. They cannot produce substantial evidence the project has the potential for a substantial adverse environmental impact. In other words, the exemption simply doesn’t, the exception to the exemption does not apply. Now, they’ve said things such as, “Many of the citizens here are opposed,” or that it’s a noxious use, that it’ll create traffic, that it’ll create protests. None of these is sufficient. There is no proposition under SEQA review whereby protest or other First Amendment activity, let alone, First Amendment activity of other people, can affect the review necessary for Planned Parenthood. Third parties cannot affect by their actions, by their threats of protestations, of their threats of disturbing the, the public safety, public health. They cannot by their actions affect the review of this permit. Now, appellants would have council members enter into a, a broad inquiry as to the social wisdom of the existence of Planned Parenthood. They would have the council look into things such as public health, safety, and welfare, prosperity, whether the proposed businesses prove offensive to patrons or, or to neighbors. But this premise is false and flatly unconstitutional. First, appellant’s, well, they’re flat wrong on the law. They misapply Victorville’s municipal code by citing the general policy statements containing the purposes and objectives and purposes and authorization preamplers to the code. They’re citing a preamble as, as forcing requirement upon Planned Parenthood. That’s simply not the case, and they’ve cited no authority to the contrary. Now, nothing in the Victorville Code allows a decision-maker to substitute his or her opinions, his or her judgment on consistency for the mandates of the Development Code. And that proposition advocated by the appellant’s is irrational and a violation of constitutional rights. In fact, one of the leading cases says, “The discretion permissible in zoning matters is that which is exercised in adopting the zone classification with terms, standards, requirements pertinent thereto, all of which must by general ordinance applicable to all persons alike. The acts of administering a zoning ordinance do not go to the question of policy and discretion, which were settled at the time of adoption of the ordinance. Administrative authorities are properly concerned with questions of compliance with the ordinance, not with its wisdom. To subject individuals to questions of policy in administrative matters would be unconstitutional.” Any attempt to stymie this application process, to halt the application process, to delay unreasonably the application process, would be a violation of Planned Parenthood’s due process rights. Planned Parenthood has a property right in this permit. It is a permit by right. They meet the, the requirements of the code, and under the code, the council, and the planning commission, and the zoning administrator have no discretion but to grant it. Deliberately flouting the law may be said to have occurred if the city’s demands for information and other procedural demands are so excessive and irrelevant to the regulatory task at hand as to conclude that such demands were imposed to obstruct or to discourage. And that’s exactly what appellant’s would lead you to do. Now, much has been made by the appellant’s that Planned Parenthood, through us, through their council, is threatening the, the city council. Let me say that that’s not the case. What we’ve done through our letter is try to outline the legal requirements. The legal requirements are clear. Our client is entitled to this permit, and denying it would be a violation of the Constitution, of the constitutional rights of, of Planned Parenthood. And by pointing that out, and pointing out the consequences of, of a constitutional violation, we’re just trying to educate the city council of what the legal consequences are of the dangerous path that the appellant’s would have you walk down. We don’t, we don’t seek litigation. Now, in closing, the last thing I’d like to point out is, our Constitution does not allow for a heckler’s veto. And in this case, what the appellant’s are urging is actually much worse than a heckler’s veto. According to the appellant’s, Planned Parenthood’s permit can be denied and can be delayed because of their actions or the actions of their allies. The Constitution simply does not allow for that. You cannot impose additional requirements, not mandated by law, on a permit applicant simply because you threaten the, the health, the public safety, or the well-being of the community. In, in fact, this is, this is the- This is very similar to probably what you guys have seen in, in the news lately of the Chick-fil-A issue, where Chick-fil-A was threatened with-
Please, please.
Chick-fil-A was threatened with denial of permits based on comments by its CEO. Now, as many of you probably recognize, denying permits based on his comments would be fundamentally unconstitutional. Yet, many of, that’s exactly what appellant’s are, are seeking here. It’s to deny, deny permits based on activity they find disagreeable, based on activity they find abhorrent. We welcome all people’s right to, to exercise their First Amendment privileges, to protest if they so see fit. But their rights don’t trump our rights. Their rights to protest do not trump our property right in the permit. Their rights to protest cannot prevent us from doing what we are eligible and permitted to do under law. And with that, I close. Thank you.
Actually, before you rebut, I want to get into public comment and allow people to actually speak on this item, because otherwise, I’ll just have attorneys going back and forth all night long.
I thought it, ah, that’s a good point.
I really, I really don’t want that.
I, I thought it might be-
I thought it might be constructive for us just to finish up and then allow the public to sort of know.
But when you say "finish up," what does that mean?
We've got like two minutes if you want, I mean, a couple, a couple of quick thoughts, just probably two minutes.
If I could ask if you could wait till then. I'm gonna allow you your time, but I want to get into allowing the public to comment.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, no, no. In many respects, I really respect the, I like, they sent a young guy from Gibson, Dunn and Crutcher, they didn't send him to the center. I like that. But he's, I agree with him in many respects about hecklers' vetoes, and we're not about that tonight. We're here urging you to be fair. A couple of clear, a couple of clear corrections. First of all, Planned Parenthood doesn't have a permit now until you act on this. They don't have any property rights. And I'm urging you just to suspend this per our earlier comments. It's very important, and I didn't emphasize this earlier, but he's stating that, you know, they're not responsible for third-party things. Well, under CEQA and under your permitting process, they're responsible, an applicant's responsible for anything that's reasonably anticipatable, so that something that's gonna be reasonably stemmed from their, their business. And you can take judicial notice, or in this case, legislative, quasi-legislative notice, of the fact that we know what's gonna happen here. And they're not responsible for folks that do bad things, but clearly, on all these health and safety issues, they are responsible. And it's important that those are anticipated. That's why we're urging CEQA compliance. So I think that's very important. We're not asking, nobody should judge the social wisdom of, we all know where most people are on the Planned Parenthood issue and their business, their, their business. The zoning administrator has no business getting into that whatsoever. But the zoning code, and this is, this is an outright misstatement by staff and by Planned Parenthood. This is not a general policy statement. This statement that I read you on those discretionary aspects are under scope of review in your ordinance. This isn't a preamble, you know, four score and seven years ago, or, no, this comes right from the code and scope of review. This permit is discretionary. And that's important to know, because that triggers all the other things we're asking you for. Let me see what else I had here. Again, I'm glad he educated you on your, on your responsibilities. It sounded like a threat to me. One other thing, in my last, my last comment, the special circumstances, the exception to the exception. They're urging you to do the shortcut on CEQA under a categorical exemption, saying, "We're ministerial, and if we're not ministerial, we're just a minor permit." And that we've got a standard of review and a burden of review and all this. There's an exception to that, that says, "Under special circumstances, you can require CEQA compliance even if there's a categorical exemption, and even if it falls within another statutory exemption, you can still find special circumstances." Here, I would respectfully submit that there's never a case in a permit that you can call it ministerial or quasi-ministerial or discretionary. Special circumstances exist with respect to this permit, because you're gonna be living with this use for a long time, and it's gonna have a lot of collateral consequences as far as the health and safety of the community. So if there's ever a case for special circumstances and CEQA compliance, I would respectfully submit that now's the time. Lisa, you had a correction or two?
Just a clarification. Planned Parenthood, your rights don't trump our rights in the High Desert. They actually sent someone to refute my appeal. I didn't know they were so scared. The young clown was such a great entertainment. Please don't let his threats scare you. And as far as me owning property here, my dad does. And Concerned Citizens is based out of Victorville and represents all of the High Desert.
If I may? Okay, for the attorneys, this is it.
I'll be very quick. Thank you for the time. One, he's just wrong on the law. Under CEQA, if it is discretionary, there is no exemption, there is no exception to that. If it's a discretionary permit, that's the end of the inquiry, under law. That's it. Second, as to Ms. Hayes', as to her standing, it doesn't matter that her father's a property owner or that the group that she claims to represent is from Victorville. On her appeal, it is her who's listed, and she doesn't have standing.
Robert, it's better, it better be very quick. You know, I need you to come up to the microphone.
I'm willing to withhold my comments till after public comments are made, if you desire so.
Thank you. All right, just so you all are aware, as you need to get up and use the facilities, they are back there in the foyer. Some of us, council members, may need to get up and do the same thing. I have over 30 cards, well, actually, in excess of that. And again, that's why I'm limiting comments to two minutes. I would encourage each of you, if what you are going to say reflects anything that the person before you or any person before you spoke about, that you just concur with it. Because obviously, we got, we have the business of a council meeting tonight. It's not just about this issue. We have other items that we will hear after this issue is over. So I would like to move this along so that the council can get to a point of decision as to whether or not we approve or deny the appeal, or we send it back to Planning Commission. Those are the options that I believe are before us, but I, once I close the public hearing, I will ask our city attorney to advise us as to what our options are. The first card that I have, and again, I'm gonna limit this to two minutes, I'm gonna be very strict on this, I apologize, but there are so many people that want to speak. Lydia Norano, or, yeah, I hope, hopefully I said that correctly. And then I'm gonna call the next two people. If you could please come up behind her, Rebecca Gomez and Stephen Fresquez.
Hello, my name is Lydia Norano, and I wanted to just state that if building this clinic for Victorville, the city, is a big mistake. I really do believe that. I don't think it's okay to go around killing babies. Babies are our future, and if we're gonna just kill them, then what future do we have? There is none. And you could say, I understand special situations with rape and stuff like that, but everybody has messed up parents, and that doesn't make it okay for a child to pay the consequences for adults. And I understand young girls like myself, they get into trouble when they do have babies, and they want an escape. But that is a consequence. You cannot just go around neglecting the consequences of your actions. And if it's too hard, there is stuff, there's adoption, and people say that option is always, that's all we have, but it's not used. That option is just overlooked. And that, there are people every day in the whole world who wish and will love and nurture a child and raise them to be productive people in society, and they're just not able to get that chance. And instead, we're just killing the babies that potentially represent us. And if they say they don't have help, what about WIC and the aid that the government does provide? What is the use? If we're not gonna use that, why, why even have that? We need to use the resources that are available for us. And if the woman, the young woman and women say they have no aid, then they need to get that aid. And it's just misleading that it is, God says it is not okay to kill, plain and simple. And if you guys are saying God is not a part of this situation, then it's not, it doesn't make sense. It's very hypocritical, because there's a sign that says, "In God we trust," and we
Time's up.
And, and we also just, oh, am I out of time?
Yeah, your time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna try to give as much time to each of you as I possibly can. And two minutes is limiting at, at most, but I may have to cut down that time if we continue to have the outbursts. Please understand, I understand the emotion in this room, but I need to get through these public comment cards. And the more applause, and the more cheering, and the more things like that go on, it prolongs us through getting through this. So I would ask you to respect the council's time, as well as your own, and allow us to have each person speak their mind before the council. I did recall, I recall on Rebecca Gomez. Okay, the next, I, next card was Stephen Fresquez. I have a gift for each of you this evening. It's called "Why Pro-Life?" I'll give it to you shortly. My name is Stephen Fresquez. Abortion is an act of violence that kills a baby. That's what it is. That's what you guys are dealing with here. I know you're talking about codes and more technical matters, but if the city of Victorville had a conscience code, that's what I'd be directing my comments at tonight. I want to read you something from the California Department of Education on bullying. Department of Education has a very clear definition of what bullying is, and we've seen it tonight. What is bullying? Bullying is exposing a person to abusive actions repeatedly over time. What is more abusive than torturing a baby to death by dismembering it repeatedly during the procedure? Bullying is a form of violence. It often, it involves a real or perceived imbalance of power. Power. That's what this is about. Now, a baby to be taken apart is a form of bullying. In fact, it's the ultimate bullying. Now, Mr. Larevy says, "There's no evidence of a nuisance." Anybody remember that? Well, I'm gonna display some evidence here that's quite graphic, and I want you to be aware that I'm not trying to trick anybody into seeing this. You don't have to look if you don't want to. But this is what Planned Parenthood would like to bring to the High Desert. United States Supreme Court says it's legal to kill them. And by the way, it's legal to show them. If you can look at this and think this is okay, I fear for you that you do not have a functioning conscience, and you better check yourself. Stephen, that's your amount of time, okay? Thank you. Thank you. Richard, Richard Reeve. Again, it's, is gonna take me a significant amount of time. Yes, you can, if, if the applause continues, I understand this is an emotional issue, but I'd like to be able to get the speakers up here. After Richard, I have Christopher Spiker and... I can't read this card. Duane Gomez, I believe, but, Richard?
Good evening, members of the Victorville City Council. My name is Richard Reeve. I live in Hellendale. I'm a resident of the High Desert. It's pretty clear from what was said this evening that if the city council denies the permit for this building, there will be a lawsuit. Therefore, I suggest certain things that might be useful in your defense in the event that that occurs. The question of whether or not abortion in some way, shape or form is a public nuisance has been raised. According to California law, a public nuisance is an interference with the common right of the general public or an indefinite number of persons, an unreasonable interference with the health, safety, peace, or comfort of the community. Very broad definition, involves a lot of discretion. And of course, under the circumstances, abortion is a protected right according to the United States Supreme Court that presents a major difficulty. However, in Florida, in 1976, three years after Roe versus Wade was decided, an abortionist was arrested on the grounds that his abortion facility constituted a public nuisance. And the reason was that a woman died in his abortion clinic. That's a public nuisance for you. On the other hand, Planned Parenthood and similar groups have attempted to paint those who oppose abortion facilities as themselves a public nuisance. Those cases have been heard at the highest courts of the land, and the courts have ruled that it's not a public nuisance. And then finally, the question of fetal remains. There's no evidence in any of the plans that I've seen, there's any preparations or any provision for disposing of the fetal remains. It might be helpful to quote a section of the Minnesota statutes, which defines the term "remains of a human being," as "the remains of the dead offspring of a human being that has reached a stage of development so that there are structures, fetal or skeletal parts, after an abortion or miscarriage, whether or not the remains have been obtained by induced, spontaneous, or accidental means." In other words, such things are cognizable under the law. And if those are not, as the statute goes on to say, not properly disposed of, there's a grounds for describing that as a public nuisance. So in the event this is actually appealed, and it seems to me is clear from the attorney's remarks tonight, it will be appealed if you deny it, you do, you are not without some defense against such claims.
Thank you. Again, Christopher Spiker. And again, I, I'm not able to read this card very well. Duane Gomez?
Duane Gomez.
Duane Gomez? Susan or Pam? Susan or Pam? Okay, thank you.
Yes, my name is Pam Brown. Resident in the High Desert here. I know you guys got a hard thing going on here, but if Planned Parenthood was all just about abortion, maybe I could understand that, but it's not. Planned Parenthood is about helping a lot of people in the community, not just teenagers who are lost, but they also help mothers and fathers of teenagers that are lost. They, they help with prescription medications for people that might have otherwise not been able to get help. It's, it's, it's not a religious issue here. It just isn't. It certainly sounds like one, but it's not. And I just hope, hope the best for your decision.
Diana Del Toro. After Diana, I have Phyllis Lazzano.
I'm Diana Del Toro, and I sympathize with those people who are anti-abortion. I don't think that I know of anybody who is, who wants abortion. I think there's a lot of misinformation going on here about Planned Parenthood. It is not an abortion clinic, and you're not gonna see dead babies thrown out. You're not gonna have the medical waste problem, because there won't be any. Planned Parenthood is an educative facility. They want to prevent people from having to make the choice to abort or not. And they may, in the final analysis, refer people to somebody who can do an abortion if you insist on having one. But they're preventative and educating, and I wish people would understand that and not be so afraid.
After Phyllis is James Kelly.
Hi. Unlike Ms. Hayes, I am a resident of the High Desert. I live in Victorville. Our community was hit really hard by the recession. I'm sure all of you know that. A lot of people lost their jobs. Many people don't have insurance. And most people, or a lot of people like myself, lost their homes. Our government, our governments aren't faring much better. San Bernardino City filed bankruptcy, and the grand jury's report on Victorville's plunging finances concern me. The High Desert, or, I'm sorry, Inland Empire faces the impact of economic downturn. Whether we like it or not, our teenagers are having sex. Planned Parenthood is gonna, can provide education to these teenagers who, whether we like it or not, they've been, our community has been hit hard. We have the highest pregnancy and STD rates in the state. High Desert needs affordable access to preventative health care, and that's what Planned Parenthood will provide. We need, it's time that our member, our neighbors have access to health care, because right now, it's very limited. So I urge you to approve Planned Parenthood's application. So I urge you to approve Planned Parenthood's application. Thank you.
James Kelly. After James Kelly, I have Howard Cartwright.
...City Council and members of the audience. My name is James Kelly. I have been a Baptist minister. I have a master's degree in theology. Having said that, I've also been involved with Planned Parenthood. And let me give you a few facts very briefly. Planned Parenthood, number one, does not perform abortions. They never have, and they never will. No, they have not. They will refer a woman to a person who will do abortions if it is a necessary thing, but they do not do that. The fact is, we have talked about the amount of money of taxpayers having to spend. Let me point out simply that when poor women can go to Planned Parenthood and can have Pap tests, for example, and other tests free of charge, they don't need to later go with dire problems to emergency rooms, which cost us thousands and thousands of dollars. The point is simply this: There are a lot of poor women in our country. These women need medical care. This, I understand, is a terribly emotional issue, but the point, looking at it as objectively as you possibly can, Planned Parenthood is in fact saving a lot of money for most of us. Number one. Number two, the women who go there are poor folk, and they need this medical care. There are some things you may disagree. I understand disagreeing with abortion. I totally understand that, and I think that everybody in this room who is a Christian has an absolute right to disagree with it. But there are people who also don't disagree and think that abortion is okay under certain circumstances, and I happen to be one of those people. The point is, is you have a right to believe what you believe. Nobody in our country, in Americans, say that you do not. But also, people who believe that abortions are okay have a right. So we are a country for freedom.
James, your time is up.
I'm sorry. We are a country of freedom.
Okay.
All right? And, you know, God bless you for believing what you believe, but we believe what we believe.
James, your time is up, James. Again, I would remind anyone coming to address the council that you are to address the council, not the audience. This is not playing to the audience. Howard Cartwright, and then after Howard, I have Heidi Thompson.
I'll try to be very brief. I am a retired Episcopal priest, and I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Some of them are girls. And I would be very unhappy if they do not have a place to go, that they can get accurate information about sex or other things that are necessary, and get the treatment they need, and get to get through some of the tragedy that we have for young people. We need to do this, and I would be very unhappy if the Planned Parenthood didn't have an office here. Thank you.
Heidi? After Heidi, I have Jay Marcos. And then after Jay Marcos, Sergio Lopez.
Good evening. When I got here today, I wasn't quite sure what I wanted to say. After observing, I realized that it seems to be a very religious issue, and it kind of makes me wonder, due to the thick religious views, how many young women are out there that don't feel comfortable going to a family member or knowing who to talk to and would need Planned Parenthood to go to for medical attention and help. And that's all I wanted to say. God bless America.
And then after that, Sergio Lopez.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Victorville, and I find out that Planned Parenthood is coming to town, and I'm very, very disappointed, and I would not like it to come. I know the impact that causes on families, because myself, I went through that. My child was killed through abortion, okay, through one of my ex-girlfriends. I tried. It's not about religious, it's about the human life, respect of human life. See? They're not tissue, they're not cell members, they're human beings. If I were to go right now and kick a pregnant woman, I would be held as a criminal, and I would go to jail. And I don't see how these people are going and making this business, and they're planning to come here now to do that, to do the same. All I see here is they are just a wolf, just dressed as a sheep. You see? So I will not participate of that. I will make sure that our spending money, our tax money, will be going to another cities. If you worry about the money, we'll take our money somewhere else, you know? And that's something you will have to think about, too. So I will ask you to please, please consider this, and don't think just with your head, think with your hearts also. Okay? And thank you, and God bless your hearts.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I showed up today to be supportive of the children that are in their mother's wombs. And someone walked up to me and asked me, "Would I like to share?" I said, "Sure, I love children." I'm a citizen of Victorville, and I love Victorville. It's beautiful. And I see you have up there, "In God we trust." And everyone knows, only God can create a child and bring a life, and it should be only God that can take a life. And I thank God that I have a quiverful. I have a lot of children and grandchildren, and I thank God for that. And I just pray that people will just consider adoption, giving their unwanted children, consider adoption instead of abortion. And like I said, I wasn't prepared, but I just pray that people will remember this: Consider adoption, not abortion.
Daniel Dale.
Excuse me. Hello, members of the City Council. My name's Daniel Dale. You know, I just want to give my two cents. I understand that this is a very complex issue before the City Council. I understand that, you know, it's a really sticky issue, really complex, and it affects a lot of people close to the heart. You know, I believe, I was a history major in school, and, you know, I just really firmly believe in that our country was founded on freedom. And when you start to encroach on those freedoms, and when you start to deny people their rights and encroach on those freedoms, you know, also, in addition to that, the separation of church and state is so critical to our constitution. If you look at why the pilgrims originally came to this country, it was because the Church of England was forcing them to worship the way they wanted to worship, and it leads back to that church and state issue. And, you know, the bottom line is, this country was founded on freedom. Every time I sing the National Anthem, every time I say the Pledge of Allegiance and look at that flag, I think of all the lives that were given so that freedom would be available in this country to all. And obviously, our Supreme Court has upheld something, and freedom is the most important thing to consider here.
Amy Mitchell. After Amy, Lonnie Chapman.
Hi. I'm a resident of Victorville, and I'm also a Human Resources manager. I work with at-risk youth, probation, foster care, and pregnant teens, and often it's the same population. At 22-years-old, just after being sworn as a CHP officer, I learned I was pregnant. I was embarrassed and scared, and it was inconvenient. I was raised a Catholic Christian, and I'd just broken up with my boyfriend. I sobbed at the doctor's office. Two days later, they called me and asked me to get an abortion. I am so glad I did not say pass. I raised a son on my own, who joined the U.S. Air Force and went on to work Hurricane Katrina evacuating citizens. Fast forward. Two years ago, I was out of a job, and I answered an ad to be an HR manager for Planned Parenthood. In my naivete, I didn't really know what they were looking for, but they said, "Would you be an advocate of abortion?" And I said, "Well, I'm really an advocate of having your baby." And the interview was immediately over. Our young women are not going to be given unbiased options by Planned Parenthood. I mentored foster youth for the past seven years. She became pregnant, right after she permed out of the system. She went to Planned Parenthood, and they put their arm around her, and she got an abortion. Six weeks later, she was pregnant again, this time with twins. Now they're awaiting adoption. There's a Mona Lisa Project where undercover underage children go into Planned Parenthood. They've done it in Memphis, Phoenix, Tucson, and Milwaukee, and they say they report statutory rape, but it's not being reported by Planned Parenthood. It's unreported crimes to law enforcement. In New Jersey, Planned Parenthood manager on video went in undercover as a man and woman posing as sex traffickers to Planned Parenthood to secure abortions, STD testing, and contraceptives for female sex slaves, so that it would make their business look It's not legitimate. It's a bait and switch. Pap smears of Parenthood is what's referred to as a lost leader.
Amy, that's your time.
Thank you. Just one more thing. Find out what any people will quietly submit to, and you will found the exact measure of injustice which will be imposed upon them. Frederick Douglass. Thank you.
Lonnie Chapman. After Lonnie, I have Deacon Dell Haraldson.
To the mayor of Victorville and to all the council members. I've told you, this is the first time I ever attend one of the council meetings, and to all the participating for the abortion clinic or what have you. My heart goes out to you, and God we trust. We pray that they all look to God for the right answer. For the reason why I'm here on a cleanup matter with the Mahari River, I care to take some property down there for the Jensen Foundation, and it's a mess there. There's a lot of debris from years, going back to 1945, I believe. I don't mean to get away from the subject of the pre-abortion clinic or any of that. This is my first time, and I'm glad to be here with each and every one of you. My heart goes out to you, and I pray that we can resolve the issue in a better way to make everybody happy. And I know it's nearly impossible, but I thank God for each and every one of you. I thank you for the council member. I thank you for the mayor and all the citizens of Victorville and the High Desert. I am a resident here in Victorville, but we have a lot of debris on that river that I'm trying to clean up. I feel that I'm alone at this point, and I thank God for the court informant and the fire department who have assisted me in many ways trying to do this. Not to get away from the main agenda from today, but that's why I came here. I didn't expect... But I want to thank you for allowing me for the two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie. And that would have been more appropriate under the regular public comment, but we'll make sure we separate that and have someone contact you regarding that issue. Deacon? And then Byron Castellanos.
Thank you, counsel. I'm the deacon with our Lady of the Desert Church in Apple Valley, and we will also be impacted by your decision. The council for Planned Parenthood said that we need substantial evidence of adverse environmental impact. Well, our position is that adverse impact of the environment is on human beings. Allowing Planned Parenthood in promotes the idea that destroying human life is okay under the misconception of free choice, women's rights, and family planning. We do not accept that freedom is the right to choose whether to kill a human being. That is slavery to sin. Those who are for human rights, all of us, need to be for all human rights, especially the human rights of the unborn living human being. Money needs to be spent on helping pregnant mothers through the process of giving birth and then adoption, or maintaining the physical and mental health of their children as they grow, rather than destroying human life. Thank you.
Thank you. Byron Castellanos. And then Elizabeth Montez.
Good evening, mayor, City Council. Just want you to know that I've lived in Victorville here for about 18 years. I have a business here. I've built many track homes, custom homes. And one of the reasons I moved up to the High Desert, to Victorville, was to have a better upbringing for my children. Now they've gone to school, they're grown up. But we have to start raising the standards here in the city of Victorville. The city, instead of getting better, it's been getting worse. And that's because I know that you have, you know, certain rules and codes you need to go by, but at the same time, we have to raise the bar and start making the right decision of what's best for Victorville. I see in Rancho Cucamonga, I see it in Pasadena, cities that have made a standard and say, "You know what? This city's going to be different. We're going to make it different for our new generations, and we're going to, you know, yes, we're going to go by the law, but you know what? Don't go by the law based on being sued." This won't be the first time someone says that they're going to sue the city, or the last time. And anyway, that's why city attorney gets paid. So I do think that we do need to, you know, make a standard, and the standard should begin now. We should not just let everybody and anybody come in and do as they please in the city. Because if we let them come in, then we might as well open everything for strip bars and everything else. Instead, we should be doing things for our youth. There's nothing for our youth to do up here on a Friday, Saturday night. We need to start thinking about parks, thinking about youth, things that we can do and make the city better. If not, we're just going to get, it's going to get worse, and you can already see it. When I first moved up here, I could leave my garage door open, I could leave my windows open. Now I have to have front gates, I have to have alarm system, I have to have cameras, I have to have dogs. But we need to lift the standard, and the city of Victorville should start tonight by making the right decision. Thank you.
Ma'am? Put the microphone down. Which did not include an abortion. I received birth control advice from them. They helped me make decisions on how I wanted to plan my family. Their name is Planned Parenthood. It's not Planned Abortion. It's Planned Parenthood. It allows women the opportunity to plan how they want to raise their children, when they want to have children, and how it fits into their life. You can go there for other services, education, if you need help with mammograms, pap smears. We need this in our community. I work with poor and low-income women in this community that do not have access to quality healthcare in the High Desert. I've also found myself unemployed for quite a while and needed access to healthcare, and there was none. There is a lot that is not available to the community, to our people, to our citizens up here, and Planned Parenthood is willing to step up and fill that void. Thank you.
Elizabeth, when I called you earlier, I actually said Sergio Lopez, which I think... Is that Sergio right there? Oh, okay.
I'll take it, though.
No, no, no. I've got a lot of cards here. I just, I wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing. I'm just trying to make sure that I didn't miss you, Sergio, wherever you are.
My name is Larry Caldera, and the three words that I just wanted to let you know is that abortion is murder. It really is, you know? And I want to let you guys have a blessed forever. The poor little babies, they're not going to be able to have that. You guys will, but the babies that won't get to have that blessed forever like everybody else does, that's not right, because abortion is murder. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reverend Rafael Poros. After him, we have Dr. George Craig. After him, we have Dr. George Craig.
Good evening, mayor, good evening, city council. This is not easy for me, you know? I've been here for the last 20 years and I know you guys very well. I know you have a tough decision to make. I want to let you know, the city manager is not the one to get that decision. You have to get that decision. You have to put your mind together and work in something, okay? Anyone in here, one of the best for Victorville. The best for Victorville is not parenthood. Thank you.
Dr. George Craig. After Dr. Craig, Nancy Ballack.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Dr. George Craig and I'm here speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for the entire medical community up here, but rather speaking for myself. But I can form an opinion about the medical community up here. As I was driving over here, to start on a lighter note, as I was driving over here, I was trying to think to myself, how would I start to say what I wanted to say? And I thought of an expression that we used to use when I lived in San Francisco, namely that just what this town needs, another Chinese restaurant. Now you may say, "Well, what has that got to do with what we're talking about here? We're not talking about another abortion clinic." No, it's the opposite. This enterprise proposed here, you have an opus and an onus to decide about because it's not either for-profit enterprise, nor is it a not-for-profit community enterprise. It's a very unique thing, as you well know. So you have a heavy burden. I myself have some personal involvement with abortion in the sense that many years ago, when I was working in New York City and taking emergency room call, I got called about a young girl who had fallen or jumped under a subway train. Miraculously, believe it or not, two or three cars passed over her and she only wound up with a bad cut on her head. And we took care of that. And then when I went to see her the next morning, the first thing that I observed was that she was obviously pregnant and her parents didn't know that. But I told them, they said, "Well, we want an abortion." Well, that baby, to make a long story short, and I'll make a long story short, but tell you, it's a personal application to me. That baby within that young girl who fell under, fell or jumped under the subway train to illustrate this kind of thing that happens to women who are pregnant like that young girls, really, that child is my niece, my loving niece who I kind of regard as almost my daughter because I don't have any children of my own. Let me just summarize and say the following. One of the factors that I think every member of this council should consider is that this enterprise, if it occurs, if we do get Planned Parenthood here in this area, is going to cause, I think, on the basis of living here for about 35 years and being a physician and a surgeon for over 50 years, is going to cause a tremendous schism in the medical community. Not only is the medical community going to have to be aware of the existence of this enterprise, but it has to anticipate and plan for taking care of what are inevitably going to be complications. And that alone is going to cause a schism in the community. So I invite you to consider that when you think about making your decision.
Thank you, Dr. Craig. That's on your time.
And I thank you very much for the privilege of the floor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm wearing a white coat because when I told someone I was coming here, he says, "Wear your white coat so they'll know you're a doctor." And I said, "They know I'm a doctor." Thank you.
Well, you also spoke over the two minutes, which proves the point that you ran for office against both Angela and I. You've become quite the politician. Nancy Ballack.
Wasn't on my agenda, but I'm Nancy Ballack. I had the privilege to teach her 15 years and bravo to Judge Hill. His daughter's passing the bar, one of my students. But tonight, I was asked by Mrs. Clinton and Mrs. Albright to be one of the delegates to Beijing. It was the Peace Equity and Justice Program where Mrs. Eisenhower had taught us to speak well and for the U.S. So our students are living up to what we call them to, just like we have lived up to what we were called to. And obviously, people don't know about Catholic Big Brothers and Big Sisters at Catholic Charities at St. Mary's. We do have programs. Maybe not with bad press as we are hearing tonight. So it's not true that there aren't programs. And I would like to invite people to, you know, investigate the programs that we do have. And lastly, I don't know how you define fraud, but if the people that are endorsing this program aren't using it, how can they endorse it?
All right.
Good evening, mayor, city council. I am here with my son. We are residents of Victorville. We are American citizens and I also pay taxes. It sounds like Planned Parenthood is getting away with some things. We trust you, mayor and city council, with the future of our children, our grandchildren, and the future of Victorville. Do not let us down. I know there's two sides to this, but make sure Planned Parenthood gets it together. You get everything they need because I don't want that for my son. Thank you.
Mark Graham.
Hello, counsel. My name is Mark Graham and I'm the pastor of Abundant Living Family Church, High Desert. And I want to address a couple of things today because there's just a lot of misinformation flowing. So number one, when we talk about the separation of church and state, that's just a secular myth and a fabricated lie. Mr. Adams, the second president, said the Constitution was written for religious and moral people. You can't have freedom if people are immoral. So that's number one. Number two, Planned Parenthood is a horrible corporate citizen. All we have to do is keep reading the papers and we know what's going on. They're saying they're not going to have abortions. These are numbers from their own website. In 2009, $249 million came from health services that a lot of their supporters want to come to the high desert. But $155 million, 38.4% of their business, came from abortion. And when people talk about we need the health services at the expense of killing babies because they're going to kill babies, because trust me, they're not going to drop 38.4% of their profits. That's the same thing as a drug dealer buying uniforms for kid on the basketball team. He's not famous because he buys uniforms for the kid on the basketball team. He's selling drugs and that's where he got his money from. Number three, number four, whether we're talking about this being a religious or moral issue. Margaret Sanger, the founder of Planned Parenthood, she made it a religious issue. Here's a direct quote from the founder of Planned Parenthood. "The most merciful thing that a large family does is to kill one of its infant members." That is out of the Women in New Race Eugenics publication in 1920. Dr. Gamble, the proctor in Gamble, went to the black church, recruited black ministers, got a black nurse, got a black doctor, and he sold the abortion issue to the black church. They bought it. I'm not buying it, even though my church is not black. And now 15 million African-American babies are gone. They are not a good corporate citizen. They are going to hurt the high desert morally. There are other resources for young women. My heart goes out to them. Our church is working with him. But there are other resources that are available. But killing one, taking the rights of one person, does not justify giving rights to someone else. I hope you make the right decision.
I have several cards paper clipped together with a request for all of that time to be lent to Irene Beltran. Irene, I will allow you to speak, but I am not going to lend the time. We just don't have it. So is Irene here? Okay, Irene, if you could, if you could come forward. Okay, that's fine. It's just I can't, this is for me to allow someone to speak 15, 20 minutes.
Well, I just want to say, for the lady who said our teenagers are having sex, I'm 15 and I'm not having sex. I'm still a virgin. And for the guy who said, "We're taking away his rights for the choice," you know, that thing, what about the baby's rights? You know? You know, how do we not ask, how do we ask them if they want to live or not? We can't. So how could we take that right away? But I wrote something for today. Can you hear me? I truly don't understand why a child must die so you can live as you wish. I will never understand that. But I understand abortion murders children. That is absolutely unacceptable. I am 15 years old. I am 15 years old and I stand here today to make myself clear with my opinion. I believe abortion is evil and does no good. How could you murder a child for any reason, whether it is financial issues or rape? I have a sister. She would have been 11 years old on the 23rd of this month. Her name is Lenore Bridget. She was murdered by my mom who had a second trimester abortion. My mom was in despair and thought she had no other option but to abort my sister. They gave her a shot to kill my sister. Immediately after she took the shot, she felt my sister kicking and punching for her life. So my mom decided not to go through with it, through with this evil act. So she went to the hospital and the doctor said Lenore will survive. Then a specialist said, "No, she won't." He advised my mom to go back to the abortion clinic to finish the procedure, which was to tear my sister piece by piece until there were no remains inside my mom. But my mom said, "Heh, no." She was in labor with my sister for six hours and then Lenore was born, dead. She was buried. Seven years later, my mom told me why Lenore was dead. I could tell she was healed from it, but my dad wasn't. I have three older sisters and three younger sisters. Lenore is the youngest sister. Even though she's not on earth, she's in my heart. But it is a misfortune because I always wonder what life would be like if she was here. I hear every day not knowing. I just ask you, please, don't let this abortion clinic in Victorville. Please don't let another family live wondering what life would have been like if that baby wasn't aborted. Don't live knowing that babies are being murdered because you chose to let Planned Parenthood come to Victorville.
I noticed two of the ladies, they had said for young teenagers to get help and a man had also said that he would hate for his kids to not get the help they needed. Well, I've experienced that myself, telling my mom that I was pregnant and Planned Parenthood is very manipulative. They are. And that's not the counseling teenagers need. Thank you for your time.
Okay, mayor, how long do I have? Can I get like seven minutes? Well, it's two and there's eight, that's 16, so I could do it in seven minutes.
I'll give you five.
Okay. Well, I'm Irene Beltran and I have six teenage daughters and a four-year-old son. I know the hurt that Planned Parenthood caused because I felt my daughter kick and turn and punch inside of me as the abortionist administered the medicine. So don't tell me that it's not painful for women, for the fetus to have the abortion being administered to it. My baby suffered and I changed my mind. I changed my mind too late because immediately after they gave my child the medicine, I went to labor and delivery and tried to stop the medicine from hurting my child and I was unsuccessful. Later, I had to bury my child. Now we go visit my daughter at the cemetery. So I take all of my seven children to the cemetery to go visit their sister. Planned Parenthood, it's horrible. Now, live action undercover investigation shows 17 Planned Parenthood clinics in 10 different states guilty of the same willingness to aid and abet the sexual exploitation of minors. In 2008, 10 Planned Parenthood clinics were willing to ignore mandatory reporting laws for sexual abuse so that they could procure sex, secret abortions for minor girls with much older sexual partners. This year, seven Planned Parenthood clinics were willing to aid and abet child sex trafficking, helping a man posing as a pimp and a prostitute managing an underage sex ring to get secret abortions, contraceptives, and STD testing. This is not a facility that we want in the high desert. I hear some ladies complaining about low-income clinics. Well, nearly 7,000 federally qualified health centers are scattered throughout the country and provide even more free assistance to underprivileged people. Planned Parenthood only has 800 clinics nationally and may turn away people if they can't play. Planned Parenthood does not provide mammograms inside their clinics. Nearly 7,000 of these clinics provide comprehensive healthcare for men, women, and children instead of the narrow spectrum of care provided by Planned Parenthood. They also provide many services Planned Parenthood does not offer, including vaccinations, x-rays, vision, dental, prenatal care, and primary care to all members of the family. Planned Parenthood, they do not help you plan anything. They help you destroy. Tell me why, if they help you plan, that there are 342 abortions for one adoption? That is not planning anything. For crying out loud, federal law protects sea turtles from destruction, but does not protect our innocent children. Planned Parenthood is horrible. In San Bernardino County, 30,000 babies die a year. Please do not allow that number to increase. 98% of women who walk into Planned Parenthood have abortions. It is not about freedom, but it's about your child. Just like I can't, I can't stop and I can't chop her arm off as she can't chop my arm off. That's not freedom. There's rules and regulations to protect us. Don't be afraid because Planned Parenthood bullies cities. They go around bullying, they're rich bullies is all they are. There's legal defense that could help cities, like for example, the Legal Defense Foundation, Alliance Defense Fund, American Center for Law and Justice, Pacific Justice Institute. There's organizations to help cities fight this injustice. Please, don't forget, you have justice on your side. All lies can't last forever. You have the citizens of Victorville on your side, as well as the high desert citizens on your side. You have truth on your side and most of all, you have the almighty God on your side. I beg you. I beg you. Please take into consideration, they cause nothing but hurt to women. My sisters are being deceived into thinking that it empowers them, that it's okay to destroy and destruct their child, but it's not okay. Good, innocent women, independent, strong women are thinking that it's okay and it's not okay. Have you ever seen a woman's face as they go inside the abortion clinic or when they come out? Is that powerful? Is that strength? No, it's not. Please help us expose the deception. Thank you.
Also, I do have from Philip Ellis, six letters that have been submitted into the record. Yeah, you can speak, but I'm not going to read these verbatim. They will be provided and... As I said, they are part of the record, so they will not be read into the record tonight. I do not do that, have not done that for anybody.
I'm not asking you to, but I am asking you to listen because I hear what the Lord tells me. I've heard things about this nation before the financial collapse, he told me in 2007. The week before it happened in 2008, he told me. I spoke it in the church. I went back home last year. It was in the timeframe where Osama bin Laden was killed. In that timeframe, we have a president that said he was going to give back Palestine, I'm sorry, Jerusalem to Palestine. I told the people then, this nation's going to take a hit. Joplin, Missouri got hit and the estimates is $2.8 billion. That's what it cost. I'm not doing it because... I'm not doing it because God doesn't threaten. His word is eternal. I know because I've been on the end of things. He, he wants, he's saying, read my words. This was given to me and I'm only going to read a portion. Yes, unto the unborn and wanted undesired, this I shall address. You know my ways. They are of life and liberty unto whosoever will. I did not choose this way from man. It is of he who is of death and destruction. For those who choose this path know not of its end. Yes, it is life which is of the Lord and Savior, spoken word of God revealed, that which made the way for all. Yes, even the will given freely so that each would choose their way. Not all have this truth within, as blind, as deaf, as dumb. For they know not of me, or that which I desire. For it is written plainly stated before all of man, that which has been planned is an abomination unto God, the shedding of innocent blood of lives taken before their birth. They have no authority upon which they shall stand. Those who have done the works of death shall give answer for all. To have knowledge of truth yet to proceed, their blood shall be upon them. For I as Lord came unto man to show a better way to those who would listen and follow to obey. The word of God revealed to man in flesh, I walked the earth, as witness to the promises those which I had heard, to come to be a servant to fulfill, pardon me, to fulfill the needs of those who are lost and dying, as many as would heed. The call which has been sent forth unto whosoever will, the purpose for my coming so that I would make the way, given unto mankind for a brighter day. Heed these words now written. Know that they are true. I am the Lord Christ Jesus. I came and died for you, unto whosoever will. Thank you.
All right, Robert, Dennis has asked to go last. He is the last card that I have. Okay, and then I'll allow Robert to respond and then that'll be all the comment I'll take. So Dennis. No, you've already had yours, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow Robert to have his.
Mayor and counsel, Moses House Ministries, um, uh, works with single mothers. Any single mother who is pregnant or has at least one child under the age of six. We have a, we have a rose garden in the front of our facility that's dedicated to the babies who have died through abortion. Every week, we have women coming to us, um, suffering from the effects of abortion. Some of them are senior citizens. They had abortions many, many years ago. It haunts them forever. We have women coming to us with sexually transmitted diseases. We, we help them get them the medical care they need. But every time condoms are just handed out, pregnancy and STDs increase. And, and we are at an epidemic proportion in, in America for STDs and pregnancies. Since Roe v. Wade, over 50, 50 million babies have been aborted. Now, I understand you are talk, considering a technical issue right here. But the technical issue and, and, and the real issue all comes together. And, um, we have had over 50 million abortions in America since Roe v. Wade. If each of those abortions were just one inch long, it would stretch from the Mexican border to the Oregon border at one inch long and past the border. But most abortions are not one inch long. Most abortions are about three inches long and, or more. So, uh, and, and two weeks ago, a woman died having an abortion in Chicago because they couldn't get her to the hospital in time. Because the abortion was done at a clinic and they had to call an ambulance when, when they discovered that she was in, in, um, distress. They had to call an ambulance, wait for the ambulance. The ambulance tried to transport her to the hospital and she died on the way. Thank you.
Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to try to bring a conclusion to this, make this a lot easier than it really seems. This is an easy issue to decide because we're not here to bait a constitutional issue, which I believe now all four of you are qualified to work in Washington around the Supreme Court, after hearing all these comments. But just to address some of Mr. Spiker's comments, he, he says the CEQA is non-applicable. I mean, I already stated for the record and it's in my application that I believe the CEQA has made itself quite clear that the environment is, is of the greatest importance. And the CEQA is, the CEQA is in place to inform you. He says that the, the project meets the requirements. I, I don't know if you've, you've examined any of the exhibits that I presented tonight, but, uh, I mean, I'm sure if the zoning administrator or, or anyone in the planning department were able to see this exhibit, they would agree with me that they aired and said, yeah, you know what, uh, we missed that one. Can't get a fire truck through there. And the diagram is drawn based upon the criteria given to me by the fire department here in Victorville. So it wasn't anything that I came up with. And, uh, and just to show you how, you know, discrepancies happen, I mean, I found several different code references to what fire track access should be. And that's again, I stated this council that I really feel the issue with the city is disorganization. And, um, the city manager really needs to address that issue, making sure that all our ordinances and codes jive with one another. And I also wanted to respond to the fact that, um, and he says there's no substantial evidence. I mean, just the exhibits alone that address the, uh, the zoning code are, are substantial enough. And all again, again, all he's done is just tried to jumble together a bunch of issues. And that's why this is a simple decision to make. We're just making decisions based upon this project's applicability and conformance to the development code and the municipal code of the city. Not whether or not it, you know, agrees with our personal beliefs or not. And, um, and, and let's just be frank. I mean, it's, the objective is spelled out in their objection and that is they intend to sue the city if you do not rule in their favor. And, you know, he wants to make the statement that Ms. Hayes and I are making threats. We're not making any threats towards anybody. We're just trying to address an issue in its proper form, in terms of its relevance to the municipal code and the development code of the city. They want to come with the ruse that they're going to bring 25 jobs to Victorville. You know what? Walmart is coming. And I bet you they told you they're going to bring you jobs, but the statistics are out there. Walmarts show up in communities, yeah, we're going to bring you 100 jobs. Yeah, but those 100 jobs, 50 of them are already filled by people that are already under their employ. And then the other 50 get filled with people that close down their businesses or have to let their employees go. So, you know, these kind of considerations are in the municipal code, in the development code for the planning department to address. I mean, they want to talk about preambles and stuff like this. You know, these scopes and everything that are in the code are, are foundations. They want to talk about the broadness of the code, but they want to be very narrow. They're telling you that you have to be very narrow, but with broadness, I mean, just example of their objection to Mrs. Hayes' appeal because she's not a resident of Victorville. Well, you know, I thought the code was supposed to be interpreted in a broad manner. I mean, she has ties to Victorville. Obviously, she established that. So again, this rhetoric, and I, I mean, it really get, it really got interesting when he tries to bring Chick-fil-A into the issue. I mean, you're talking about an issue that hasn't even gone before in any adjudicator. I mean, we need to deal strictly with our municipal code, our development code in respect to this site plan. The site plan does not conform to all of the applicable development codes. Very simple. I'd be happy to sit down with staff and go through it with them. But, I mean, like I mentioned before, just because of the fire track access is not there. I don't even know, because I don't even know what the code says about parking requirements. But it's not my responsibility to prepare this project for Planned Parenthood. That was, uh, Ms. Leslie Bradley's responsibility, who's not even here tonight. And again, I mean, I've been in this business for 30 years. And this is the first time I've had to really see the circus with lawyers involved. I mean, again, as I stated before, the procedure in our code says that if someone disagrees with the zoning administrator, they can write to him for clarification. If they disagree with this clarification, it goes before the planning commission. If you disagree with the planning commission, it goes before the city council. Why? Why are those things there? Why? Because you all are intelligent enough. You all have a high school education and a reading level that allows you to read these codes without the need of specific individuals to tell you what they mean or what they think they mean. Because it's very clear, Mr. Spiker's comments, and I'll even say, uh, Mr. Wheeler's comments, they're all opinionated, but it's very clear cut in this code. Especially when I bring up the example when they're asking Planned Parenthood to bring the site into compliance with the code in regard to their sign, their trash enclosure, their parking. In that particular code, and I, I don't want to belabor the point and, and spend time trying to dig it out, but in that code, there's a fourth thing, the consideration of views on neighboring properties. There's no sections in the applicant's drawing package that demonstrates what kind of impact they're going to have on neighboring properties. There should be a section drawn through the adjacent sites, locating the buildings on each site, showing where the fences are going to go, what kind of impact on views. I mean, has anybody really addressed the financial implications of the Korean restaurant when this fence is put up as proposed by Planned Parenthood? What kind of impact it's going to have on the, uh, traffic that drives down the freeway and seeing this business and providing this business with additional revenue, which provides revenue to the city? The, you know, the development code is very clear. We need to look at the impact financially on the neighboring properties and on those uses. In, in this packet, there's an exhibit marked, which I like to call, you know, unintentional spot zone. Because this is a mixed-use site. You got a C2 site which allows just anything and everything. And if you really look at it realistically, with common sense, some of those existing businesses that are adjacent to each other really don't make any sense, number one. Number two, they're hurting each other. They don't have any practicality whatsoever. And, and a lot of those businesses have gone out of business just because of that. You know, I, I really urge you to look at other parts of the city, especially down by Bear Valley Road and the 15 freeway. I like to commend the planning department with what's going on down there. I see some, a lot of good things. And I says, well, why is this part of the city any different? You know, we need to really consider the impact that this project is going to have on this city financially. Why? Because it's in the code. We need to consider. Is the site plan really in conformance? No, it is not. So in conclusion, I, I thank you for your time. And again, I, I just really want to speak for the record that I'm here not to address the political issue. I'm strictly here because it is obvious from the evidence I presented to staff, to this council, that this project does not conform in its entirety to the development code. This council doesn't need to decide, uh, make a decision based upon the entirety of my appeal. All you have to do is agree with one part of it. I mean, I, I'm willing to state here that in my appeal, I made statements regarding police services. Well, I met with Captain Yoder yesterday. And after speaking with Captain Yoder, I feel pretty confident in saying, you know what? I need to withdraw those statements in my appeal about the impact of police services. You know, we talked about that, about potential protests, that type of thing, and the impact on this city. But even in my own admission that that part of my appeal may not be acceptable, doesn't mean that the appeal in its entirety is unacceptable. All you need to do is agree with one part of it. And I'm asking you to really look at it and make that decision based on that. You all, you all don't have to agree on the same thing. One of you can agree on one part of the appeal and the other one doesn't have to agree on that part. All you have to do is agree, agree with one part of this appeal that it does not conform in its entirety, that this project does not conform in its entirety to this, our city development code. And that's what I'm here to defend because I'm tired. 30 years, I'm tired. All I've asked, our business offers code enforcement intervention and we work with cities. And all we ask is that the people running our cities live up to the codes and ordinances they've made into law, just as they have been appointed to impose on us. And that's it. This planning department of our city made a mistake in this project.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'm now going to close the public hearing on agenda item number 11. And I would, uh...
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if I could interrupt for just a second. Before you get into deliberations, I would like to make one comment. And then also, uh, planning staff has a couple of items they, they'd like to clarify. City staff, every one of us has an opinion about every project that comes to the city. Sometimes it's stronger than others, whether it's this issue or a Walmart or Macy's or anything at all. Uh, our job is to process that according to the priorities of the city council, which are laid out in the code. Uh, and that's exactly what they do. Uh, we have very professional staff who have many, many years, decades of experience. Um, with that said, I would like to comment, or actually the development director to comment on a couple of items that were brought out actually very early in this discussion by both the applicant and by the appellant regarding whether or not this is a ministerial action and the applicability of discretion. Mr. Webb, if you could address those, just so the council has that clear because I believe both sides misstated what staff actually did.
Absolutely. Um, as you know, you have before you a staff report that was prepared by myself, not by any attorneys, followed by the appellant's arguments, followed by a response by the applicant's attorneys, and then an additional rebuttal from the, um, appellant's attorney, one of the appellant's attorneys. And so there's a lot of various documents in here. I think there's been a little bit of confusion over who said what. And not to raise any additional issues, I'm not going to respond to any new issues because I think the staff report basically speaks for itself and covered all the issues tonight. But just to clarify for the record regarding the, uh, some of the comments that were made, regarding CEQA compliance, the term ministerial project was mistakenly attributed to staff numerous times. Staff never stated that it was a ministerial project, nor claimed that it was a ministerial project. That was the response of the applicant's attorneys, of Planned Parenthood's attorneys that made that argument. Staff has, from the beginning, considered that, um, as far as CEQA is considered, we made the finding that Section 15301 for existing facilities was the appropriate exemption, exemption for this project as it covers minor alterations of existing private structures and facilities. And those qualify as exemptions according to CEQA. That's as far as it goes. There was no discussion and no debate with staff about whether it was ever ministerial and/or discretionary, which brings in the other issue. It was also stated that staff claimed that, um, that, that it was a discretionary project or it was not a discretionary project. We didn't make the determination either whether it was ministerial or discretionary. I think the confusion comes in, in that staff has noted that we had no discretion over the use. The use was never been in question with the zoning administrator or with the planning commission. Because the actual use is permitted under, as they've stated or argued back and forth, C2, which is general commercial. The actual use is a medical office. That is permitted. And it's a general term used for everything from a, from, you know, a dentist office to, to a clinic, to surgery throughout the entire city. We have numerous medical offices in C2 and there has been no, there has been... We have numerous medical offices in C2, and there has been no determination of any requirements, restrictions, or regulations on those offices. Therefore, there was nothing in the code to apply to this use. By code, it is a permitted use in C2. Had Planned Parenthood come forward without any of the alterations to the exterior of the building, they would have a business license and be operating today. However, for the sake of whatever, you know, whatever their needs are, there were alterations desired, and that's what brought this forward. It was based upon the exterior alterations to an existing site within the city, and that's where the discretion is, there was no discretion over use. Again, I think that, all of the other arguments that were raised tonight have been previously discussed by staff. I do want to separate, though, for the record, what staff's response was, which is clearly here at the beginning of your agenda report, and the other responses, which we're not taking any sides on. The only other issue I think that was raised of significance, the fire access issue, I'm sure there's a question from at least one member of the council as to, you know, as to that issue, and yes, it was reviewed and approved by the fire department. And having said that, I know more about the specifics, and I'm not qualified to discuss that.
Can I just make a comment on...
Yes, I was concerned when, what's his name, Larrabee, mentioned the fire access, and that structure was constructed years and years ago. At the time of construction, the fire department would have looked at all avenues, fire hydrants, access, and so on. So I was concerned about your comments that fire department access was limited.
No, we're not going to get into debate, I...
No, the fire department did...
You were making your comment.
And there is a hydrant adjacent to the building?
The southeast corner.
Well, I understand that, that was just a comment, that the building wouldn't have been constructed without proper access and water supply.
Okay, before I get to other councilmember comments, I'm going to defer to our city attorney as to what it is we're doing here tonight.
Thank you, ma'am, McCaffrey. You are sitting as the appellate body tonight, per your municipal code, while typically and traditionally, what you have done is reviewed the record that was before the zoning administrator and before the planning commission, to see if they were justified in their decision-making. That's sort of the typical role in an appellate proceeding, but here you also have the further discretion to make decisions, essentially likened to a trial de novo, basically a new trial. If there's additional information that has been made available this evening, you are allowed to consider that. You have the ability to affirm the decision, to deny the decision, or to amend in any way that you deem appropriate. So, sitting as an appellate body, you basically have the ability to grant the appeal, to deny the appeal, or to make recommendations, depending on the information provided. As the plan director pointed out, I mean, the issue of use is really not the issue before you here, it is a site plan modification, and while it's a very passionate discussion, the issue really before you is, is the site plan modification appropriate, consistent with the development code and with the SEQA proceedings? And staff has undertaken that analysis, and they have determined that it is. You have full discretion to do whatever pleases you.
I'm a father, and I'm a grandfather, and those two children of mine, adults now, were children of choice, because their mother and I decided to get married when they were... Well, the grandchildren have no idea that I have no blood flowing in their veins, they love me as if I did. And there couldn't be a person in this room who loves their children or their grandchildren more than I do. I'm sure many of you love them as much, but not more. But my children, my grandchildren, are not the issue that's before the council. The issue that we're dealing with today is whether the staff has done a proper job on the site plan modification, whether the planning commission made the correct decision in approving that, and whether, based on all the information that I have read, on an extensive staff report that was provided to us, and all the testimony tonight, which I've listened to carefully, whether we should grant or deny those appeals. And I am convinced that staff did their job correctly, that the planning commission made the correct decision, so I'm going to vote to deny both appeals.
I have a few questions. You answered the one with the fire truck. I would like to ask about the environmental studies as far as the sewer and how they dispose. Has that been addressed?
As an existing site, and I'm sure the attorney would confirm the use, they contract for services as our understanding for disposal, that's all internal, it has nothing to do with the dumpster, as far as hazardous waste goes. They're required, they are required to do so and get the same permits that any medical office in the city would be required to do. We have never been involved in that.
I have a question to the city attorney. It was brought up here tonight, that this council has voted no on another nonprofit. Would that case, could that case be argued, that we set precedence?
I very much doubt it, different facts and circumstances entirely from the current issue here. This issue, again, before you is, notwithstanding all the testimony, it's a very, very narrow issue. It's, was the planning commission's decision, and prior to that, the zoning administrator's decision with respect to approving the site plan modification, consistent with the development code and consistent with, and was the necessary SEQA analysis undertaken appropriately?
If I may also, the distinction was, that was about use, it was not a site plan only. It had a conditional use permit, I believe, also.
And based on that determination, if it was a use decision, it would not be precedential here at all?
Right. Actually, if my recollection is correct, it wasn't even a permitted use that they wanted a use, so it was either conditional use or a non-permitted use now in the zone. But it was a use issue, and that would be the major distinction.
Simple answer is no, it would not be a precedential.
And also, it was brought up here tonight about licensed doctors. It has, I don't understand about that, I mean, if...
I'm not sure that in the planning commission's determination, they have any decision-making as to how the use is operated, that's not within the city council's purview. I assume there are laws and regulations that determine how they've done, but it's not, that's not a city council issue.
So we could just let people open up shop and just chop people up and not have a license to do so?
We require that they get all state-required permits and all outside agency permits. So every permit that's required for them to get, or licensing, every business in the city is required to do so on their own. And if we receive any complaints, we follow up on those, and if they don't have the necessary permits or licenses for what they're doing at the time, that's when code enforcement takes action. And any, anything can be, any business license can be revoked at that time.
And then regarding the seven-foot wall, do other businesses have a seven-foot wall in that area? So they do have other seven-foot walls?
There's, there are other seven-foot fences throughout the city.
In the area?
In that area, oh, in the specific area?
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on.
No, no, I don't believe, I don't recall any.
So would that, would that block the view of other businesses to do business?
I didn't see any impact when I was there. I was...
I think that the difficulty here was, we, I raised the same issue with him that you're raising now.
Uh huh.
It would be hard to satisfy all the concerns, because there was also comments and concerns about screening the use. So it's hard to screen the use without a wall, or, you know, one of the appellant's wanted the use screened, one of the appellant's wanted the wall removed. The applicant requested the wall, and seven feet is the permitted limit, there's no discretion on our part, so it was permitted. But like I said, tonight's arguments, you heard, one wanted it screened and one wanted it removed.
No, hey, hey...
If that is the permitted, that is the permitted use.
I'm sorry, I'm not allowing this, this is not public comment time.
Or the permitted height.
Okay, my next question is regarding security, I know that when Karma had the murders there, we required them to have security, and so obviously, this is a very emotionally charged, and, you know, people get very upset when it comes to abortion, that are we going to require that as well?
No, that would set precedence. We have never held the applicant or the business responsible for the actions of protesters or others. The business itself has not been proven to, nor have they made any claims that that is unsafe, or has unsafe activities. It's that the protesters may lead to traffic problems and safety issues, and that would be basically asking the user to pay for, you know, protesters' issues and problems, or potential problems coming from protesters. So no, there has not been, nor, you know, and again, the code clearly allows medical offices as at use, and has no stipulations whatsoever, as is the same for businesses throughout the city. We don't really have the discretion to pick and choose. Conditional use permits, when a use is a conditionally permitted use, that is when staff, the commission, the council introduces all kinds of conditions of approval into it, and we have the liberty and ability, that's also when the state law requires us to make findings. This, however, is not a conditional use permit, it's a permitted use. So the answer is no, there's been none of, you know, no additional requirements added to this. The only requirements have had to do with the exterior improvements and the parking requirements and access, and et cetera, to bring it into code compliance to the extent possible for an existing site.
And then I also heard comment tonight regarding incomplete site plans, is that correct?
No, that wouldn't be correct.
So all the plans that have been submitted are complete?
Yes.
Yes, I think that might also be, there was, if it's the same discussion, there are plans currently that go through, at the applicant's own risk, go through building plan check, and those are the applicant attempting to do what the commission and the zoning administrator have required of them.
In addition to the interior improvements that they're proposing.
Right, so for instance, enclose the trash can, now there's plans coming forward on a daily basis that may have the trash can enclosed, move this gate there, all of that, all of the requirements for those plans is in the directions within your staff report, and then there comes the process of submitting and resubmitting and comments back and forth to building. We have not received any secret plans for additional emergency rooms or any changes other than what was already approved at this point. I'm not naive either, I'm not saying that they may not come, and I'm not saying they may not have, you know, they themselves said, "Not at this time," totally agree. But just for your peace of mind and yours, we have no plans indicating that there's additional things that weren't included in here, other than our requested changes.
And if I could add a little bit, I think the incompleteness was more of a reference of us not releasing the plans that were in plan check, because they're not complete, they're not what is going to be built. So they have submitted plans which don't meet codes, so they've been given corrections. Those plans have been given back to the applicant to fix, therefore, we're not going to release those to the appellant, because she could draw the wrong conclusions that these are the plans of how it's going to be. So, if that helps.
But the only changes are those that we've required.
Okay, and then the attorney made reference that this, this appeal is no good, because Lisa Hayes is not a resident of Victorville. Is that a requirement?
It doesn't even matter, that's not our argument. We accepted the appeal, the city clerk accepted it, we've responded to it. Just like whether ministerial or discretionary, we took the most conservative approach, you know, we made the hardest claims possible for SEQA, rather than taking the easy out and saying it's ministerial. We also took her appeal, rather than saying, "You're not a resident." So to us, that's not our issue. That's another issue that they're arguing between themselves, but we accepted the appeal, and we responded to it in the staff report to all of her arguments.
Okay, and then regarding the in and outbound traffic, I'm a member of Kaiser Hospital, and I find that it is difficult to get in and around there, and if there is protesters there, which I'm sure there probably will be, has that been studied?
No, as an existing site, the same as any other use, it has not, it has not been. However, there are requirements within the law that the protesters must comply with, and they will not be blocking access or traffic, et cetera. I'm sure they'll be on the sidewalk in a safe place, as they've been, by the way. They've been protesting on the sidewalk, out of the way, and if that continues, that will be fine. Other than that, obviously, if there is something and there's some disorderly conduct or problem, then the police will intervene, I'm sure. But they are not allowed to block access to the site by law.
Okay, well, with all the questions that I had, I still have an issue with the in and outbound traffic. I believe that it is an issue of public safety, and I do believe that it is very compact, and that I am concerned that we will not get a fire truck in there, or an ambulance in a timely manner to save lives. Also, I do have an issue with the seven-foot wall, and if it, in that area, I think that it's going to block other businesses, and I think that also, this could be an issue for surrounding businesses to have a lot of animosity and a lot of anger from residents, and it could cause other businesses to go out of business, or have to relocate, and in this economy, that's almost impossible. And with that, I'm not comfortable with denying the appeal, I'd like to uphold that appeal.
Mr. Larrabee indicated that we should only look at the, holding the municipal code and development codes and so on, and that's what I'm looking at. Everything else is private beliefs, I have to just look at how it affects the city of Victorville and its municipal code or development code. I was concerned with the comments about the fire and access, but our chief, I understand, and his staff have looked at it. I, as a former fire chief, I know the building, because I was here when it was constructed, and we would not have allowed that building to be constructed if it wasn't accessible through fire, or if it didn't have the adequate water flow. So that is not a concern anymore. You mentioned the law enforcement or police, and according to your words, you talked to our police chief, and those concerns are gone. As far as the access for vehicles and so on, I think that's addressed through, you know, again, when the building was constructed, all those, all those things were looked at. I'm not here to argue here, I'm just making my comment, okay? Yes. I'm not, I'm not asking you a question, I'm looking at staff. And so, having said that, I think that our staff has appropriately given the authorization or permit, and I'm going to deny the appeal.
I have a question that came out of Rudy's statement. He did make a comment that I find interesting, is that he said that the building is old. And how, when was that building constructed? Do you know, Rudy, just roughly?
It was constructed...
Early 80s, I believe.
In the 80s, like, maybe 30 years ago?
Yeah.
Okay, so if it's 30 years ago, our population has increased dramatically since then, so how could, how could you, how could you say that the traffic and fire trucks and public safety vehicles are going to be able to get in there, if there's so much more traffic, and there's also that Kaiser Hospital where it's packed, and you can't get parking?
Well, I can tell you, the streets are the same size as they were when the building was constructed, and, you know, so the trucks can get through, and traffic can get through.
But if there's cars in the way and people, because the population has boomed...
That's the reason the trucks have sirens, so they can get the people out of the way.
Rudy, the cars are parked, because they're in Kaiser.
Please, please, please. Obviously, this is, has been a heated discussion, but, you know, I have to, I have to agree with Councilwoman Vias, especially on her last comment. This building is over 30 years old, building codes change, fire... codes change, fire codes change, and quite frankly, you know, in all deference to our public safety officials, I think that there is going to be some public safety concerns. The ingress egress, in and out of that property is horrible, it should have never been built that way from the very get-go, but that goes back to prior when Bill Webb or anybody that's sitting up here was in a position to make those decisions. Whoever developed that entire area there in Park Center, it kind of really wasn't developed in the right way. That being said, it is a property that is there, we've got a user that wants to use it, understandably so, but is it the appropriate use for that facility, and is my opinion that it is not. I do not feel that the ingress egress issues have been properly addressed by staff, I think the seven-foot wall, although allowable, is excessive and does block neighboring businesses, it does cause neighboring businesses to have issues as to whether or not they will be able to attract clientele. I'm concerned about the Cocos, I'm concerned about the motel there, I'm concerned about the other offices and restaurants located in and around that area, and I think that, you know, there's been suggestions that the city's going to get sued over this issue, let me tell you something, folks, we will get sued one way or the other on this issue. So, no matter what decision we make here tonight, that's likely to happen, but as a council, and our city attorney addressed this, as a council, unlike the planning commission and unlike our zoning administrator, we do have discretion, and that's the beauty of why this would get to this point, and that discretion lies with this council, we have the ability to make decisions based upon what we feel is in the best interest of the citizens of our city. So, that is what we're here to do, that's what we should be doing. So with that, I think the council is deliberated, it appears it's going to be two-two, but I will entertain a motion at this time. To grant or deny?
I make a motion to grant the appeal.
The motion fails with Mayor McEckern voting yes, Councilmember Vias voting yes, Mayor Protim Cabralis and Councilmember Kennedy voting no, and Councilmember Rothschild absent.
Are there any other motions on the floor? All right, seeing none, could I defer to our city attorney as to what that means at this point?
The effect of that is that there has been no affirmative vote to grant the appeal, and therefore, the planning commission decision previously rendered would be still in effect, and upheld.
So, at that point, that means that Planned Parenthood is moving forward. Agenda item 11 has been heard, if you were here for that item and wish to leave, the council's going to take a five-minute recess before we get into the rest of our items. Moving back to order, moving on to agenda item number 12, this is a public hearing called to hear arguments for and against confirmation of annual assessments for the Citywide Street Lighting Assessment District Number Two for fiscal year 2012-2013, and to approve the engineer's report by adopting Resolution 12-039. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on agenda item number 12, anyone wishing to address the council at this time? Anyone want to close the public hearing and return to the council for a decision?
Motion by Mayor Protim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 13 is our consent calendar.
I would like to pull item A.
Okay, we'll pull item A, handle that separately.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
If we could handle agenda item 13A, Ms. Vias?
I would just like to make note that the attorney's legal fees are $108,000, and I find that excessive, but I have another question, can I just pull out just that, but and vote on the rest of the demand schedule? Just pull out that one check and vote no on that one?
That would be appropriate, you could do that.
Okay. So, we got to do it twice, is that what we're doing?
You should have a vote on everything other than A, that item, and then vote on that item.
All right, so this will be to approve the balance of the commercial demand schedule, with the exception of the city attorneys?
Please.
Yes, check number 710096.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion on 13A, check number, again, Ms. Rupperson?
71, oh, I went away from it, 719006.
1009, was that?
Yes, the one that I said earlier.
Okay, that one, I'll entertain a motion on that.
If council could do a voice vote on this one, because there's only one item--
I'll make the motion.
Second.
This is a motion to approve our attorney bill, right?
Attorney bill.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
So, for the record, who in favor, want to oppose?
Yes, the motion was by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protim Cabralis, and carried with Councilmember Vias voting no on that particular warrant.
All right, agenda item number 14 is request to award a contract to Kearns Construction in the amount of $42,852.98 and appropriate additional funds from FEMA grant in the amount of $12,539.11 to complete the Osomawash Access Road and Channel Repair Project.
Motion by Mayor Protim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 15 is request to approve amendment number four to the annual agreement with Bootsco Utility Design, Inc., exercising one of two remaining option periods under the agreement, an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 16 is request to one, award a contract to Bruce Scarborough of Asperia, California, for the rehabilitation of NSP-3 property located at 15108 Foal Court, and to designate the assistant city manager as authorized signer of all related transaction
Motion by Mayor Protim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda item number 17, this is a request to direct staff to prepare a factual response to the statements made in the July 8, 2012 edition of the Daily Press regarding the grand jury report and costs associated with VB2 power plant and industrial wastewater treatment plant. Doug?
Councilmember Kennedy requested a couple of reports specifically related to those costs of those two projects, this item is before you tonight to give that specific direction to staff, if the council so chooses to direct us in that manner, I would anticipate getting those back to the council at a future council meeting, probably first meeting in September is my best guess.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 18 is request to direct the city attorney to provide city council with any agreements pertinent to closed session discussions prior to them being placed on their regular city council agenda, and I believe this was at the request of Councilmember Vias.
Yes, I had requested that we receive the materials so that we can review them and have questions ready for closed session, and I don't feel that I'm prepared without seeing the agreements, and this will avoid any confusion or misunderstandings in the future.
If I might, Mayor McEckern, it's certainly something that you could do, I would just caution and hopefully get direction as well, that if we do provide the documents ahead of time, that we then caution all of the council members as to the potential for the concerns if the documents were disseminated to the wrong people, it potentially is a Brown Act violation, maybe a confidentiality violation at that point. If you want to do this and you want to approve this procedure, then the recommendation would be that every time we do that, that we cover it with a letter or an indication or memo indicating these are the ramifications of dissemination of the information, because it cannot certainly be shared with anybody, it does put council members at risk if they get it ahead of time, but, you know, it's something that certainly could be done if you want to do that. Keep in mind that most of the transactions ultimately come to the council in open session in any case.
That's ahead of the, because they're included in the agenda, ones are formally--
Yeah, what, if you decide to do it, my recommendation would be that it be in a sealed envelope prior to the closed session, addressed to each one of the council members, again, with confidentiality stamped all over it, and a warning about the ramifications of what happens if the information is leaked or disseminated to third parties.
I'm trying to remember if, how often we have seen dealt with agreements in closed session.
It's not typically, it will be on rare occasions, it's probably going to be even more rare now that redevelopment agencies, which is the typical transaction, are being dissolved, so there's going to be very few, it would be essentially a purchase and sale agreement with respect to city-owned properties, or the possibility of purchase and sale agreements dealing with the dissolution of agency-held properties that it might occur, and again, before those agreements are finalized, they always come before the council for public action, but if you wanted to see those agreements, and I agree, it would be relatively rare that you'd see them, but we could provide them to the council.
You know, I wasn't just referring to agreements, because I know a lot of times they come in with big spreadsheets with a lot of numbers, and within a couple of minutes, we're asked to give direction, I would like to see any materials that we're going to use to give direction, so that I can adequately prepare ahead of time questions or, you know, understand it.
And I understand that desire, there's going to be a little bit of a balancing act there, because a lot of the information, if it's provided by a third-party developer, will be proprietary information, that that entity may not want to be made public, so to the extent we'd have to get waivers from the private sector developers if they're going to submit documents, the other possible result is that they're going to be less willing to provide that type of documentation if they're concerned that it might get leaked out, I mean--
You know--
It gets to trade secrets in issues like that.
It doesn't necessarily have to be from the developer, I mean, a lot of times you come into closed session and you give us, you know, the lowdown in a couple of minutes, I mean, if you could just put those bullet points down so that I have them ahead of time, so I have the questions, you don't necessarily have to get anything signed from the third party, just maybe what you're going to go over with us.
Perhaps, Andre, and I kind of hear what she's saying, I know that internally, within your firm, on closed session items, you obviously come prepared, you have paperwork with you to kind of discuss the issue at hand, is that something that could be provided to the council--
Yes.
--without necessarily talking about or providing these spreadsheets or agreements or potential agreements that may ultimately be voted on by the council? In essence, a staff summary--
Staff report, right. If the council so desires, we could do, again, a staff report or a staff summary of the item to be discussed, to give you a heads up. My biggest concern is that, you know, the risk is on you, that if the documentation of the information is disseminated, it could be resulting in a violation of the Brown Act.
Yeah, agreements was one thing, and I didn't have a lot of concern about that, but now, basically, we're talking about every closed session item that we're going to deal with, we're going to expect you to deliver a staff report in advance of closed session that now is out in the hands of five people.
That's the risk.
And it's going to be, at a minimum, all the discussion topics that we're going to be covering in a closed session meeting. I'm not comfortable with that at all, if that's not what this, well--
Let me add my two cents, that if, I'm opposed to the motion, but if the council, there's three votes to allow for this information ahead of time, then I will ask that I never get that information ahead of time, because I'm not going to put my personal self at risk for that at all, I will indemnify myself by saying, "I will never receive that information ahead of time." We've not had any need to do that in the past, here we are today, so, I don't know, I'm opposed to the idea, it puts the city at risk, but if the council decides that's a policy they'd like to have, then I'll indemnize myself in reverse order by saying, "I don't ever want to see that, those documents until the night of the meeting."
The risk is actually greater to council members as individual members rather than it is to the city, certainly the city could be sued by third parties if they're disseminating confidential information, but you ultimately hold the Brown Act privileges, and you are the ones that can waive it, only you can do that.
This agenda item is to direct you to start doing it now, not to come back with a report to discuss all the various risks, it's to direct you now to start doing that.
Correct.
I mean, if, I will tell you this, if three of you approve it, I'm going to vote against it, but if three of you approve it, I'm with Mike, I don't want anything in advance, I don't want to ever be--
And just, so you are all aware, again, if there was a violation of the Brown Act, keep in mind that portions of it are in suspension right now, but I would hope that this council still abides by the Brown Act, and it will probably become in effect again. It's potentially a misdemeanor on behalf of the council members to disseminate that information, it's not a council issue as whole, it's up to the individual members, so you are the ones that are assuming the potential liability.
The only thing that I'm trying to do is not violate the Brown Act or disseminate the information, I just want to be able to make prepared decisions, and not make three-minute decisions, and not completely and fully understand the issues, and not have questions prepared in advance to the issues, and I would just like, I'm just basically asking for a little bit of preparation and transparency for myself to make better decisions for the city, that's it.
Is there a way that that could be done via communication between individual council members and staff and/or your office, without having to--
Yes, certainly, the other way to do it would be to transmit attorney-client privileged communications between our office and council members prior to a closed session, which is essentially the same thing, you as a body at that point are the ones that hold the attorney-client privilege, and only you as a body, namely, three votes, can decide to waive that privilege.
Help me out with this one, though, I'm thinking too about closed session issues we deal with, typically, what we're asked for in closed section is direction on where to go, I can't think of any decisions, we have reportable action--
Yes.
--when we've approved real estate transactions, which must be done in closed session, and then we make it all public.
That's correct, the typical practice has been, you know, settlement agreement, one of the condemnation actions, taking, for example, one of the Nisqually interchange properties that we have needed to acquire, typically, you give direction to say, "Go out and finalize negotiations," however, that document needs to come before this council once the other side has signed it, as in a public session, and you get that as part of your agenda well before the transaction. If we have to go into closed session, it's to give direction as to meet a negotiated price and terms of that transaction. price and terms of that transaction.
And again, I'm going to say that I'm not, I understand that. My point is, is that in order to give good direction and be comfortable with that direction, I would like a little preparation. I, maybe I'm not as smart as you guys and I can make those big decisions in three minutes. I just like to, I just need more preparation.
You know, it seems to me that what you're requesting runs counter to what you've been doing. You refuse to even sign the document when we go in there and saying that we're not going to disclose anything. You feel that it's not, you don't have to. And maybe legally, you're on a correct ground, that you technically don't have to. But it would seem nice that if you would mention that, you know, we're going to, I'll respect the confidentiality of the meeting, you don't ever sign those documents and say that you'll do that.
Because I was advised by my attorney that you don't have to, we don't have to sign that agreement and that we are under the Brown Act.
I agree. I agree. I don't, I'm not disagreeing with that point of view. I'm just simply saying that we all sign it because we know...
I know, and I feel that you push that agreement as a way to bully me or scare me, and I, you know, I don't take kindly to it. So, I'm under the Brown Act. I'm the one that's going to get in trouble if it gets disseminated, and I'm asking for preparation.
Andre, let me, let me see if I can clarify this issue, because it's my understanding that any one of us could come to you and ask a question or go to staff and ask a question about what's on the agenda and get some sort of briefing from you.
Absolutely.
Could that not happen today without the dissemination to the entire council?
Certainly. You are all able to contact me and ask me what the items are, and I will give you a brief description of what the items are. What I have to avoid doing is talking to all five of you and trying to, or have the five of you try and get to a consensus on any decision-making, because then it's a serial meeting. But if a council member wants to know about, you know, sees an agenda item, absolutely call me, and I can give you an indication of what it is. I will, again, advise you that disseminating the information is a violation of the Brown Act, but this is what the item's going to be about.
Well, I think you only have one council member that wants that information.
Well, on the other hand, I don't object to one council member making that request, and if the, and the city attorney is comfortable providing that information, an attorney-client privilege, the extent of what he wants to produce in the way of documentation, I think, has to be his call. But I don't see any problem with one council member making that request. And if this were changed to say that, I got, I'm okay with it.
Well, I think that that can happen already. Well, what I'm saying is that it can happen already today. There's no need for action. I think, I think, in essence, what I'm hearing and what I think Councilwoman Vias wants is perhaps for your office to provide somewhat of a summary of the closed-session items to her prior to closed session.
I don't have any problem with that at all. We provide analysis on potential conflicts if there's a conflict issue, and this would be no different than that, so I have no problem doing that.
Yeah, and it's like, if you're going to show, bring documents that I'll be, I'll have time to review them.
And that, that certainly, you know, I'd like to get direction from the entire council on that issue. I don't have a problem doing that. My understanding is that the four other council members don't feel like they need those documents, but if it's okay with you, then we could provide that document with the same caveats that, and again, I believe it would be a very rare instance that it's going to be a document that comes before the council in closed session that we're going to vote on that evening or report out. That it's hard to ever happen.
More likely to be just a discussion item.
Discussion about the transaction, yes.
Well, and I think if it is one, if it goes to that extent, then that's where you're probably going to have to involve staff anyway. I mean...
Exactly.
So, I think, and I hope that that will solve that issue, but if not, we can always revisit it.
Proceed, and if it's okay with you, we'll proceed that way and see if that works, Angela.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number 19 is request to direct staff to explore options for recording closed session on an audio system similar to Granicus. Doug, I know this was at Councilmember Vias's request, but I'm going to ask you, is that possible or how?
It certainly is possible. We don't have that equipment available as of this time. Typically, we have a digital recording, and at times such as at the last council meeting, when there has been a request to release that information, the city clerk has certified that it is the true and correct recording. And that's what my recommendation would be, that we stick with that, because that's a very legal way to do it. If the council would prefer us to look into other recording options, then certainly we can do that.
If I might, I would have a concern with a third independent party recording the information, because with an entity in a program like Granicus, I would assume you'd have numerous technicians being involved in either transcribing, recording, et cetera. Again, the concern is that the privileges that you hold closely, the Brown Act privileges and attorney-client communications, may be violated, not even intentionally, but the more people you bring into the mix, the more difficult it is. Whereas, the city clerk has the requisite authority. That's her job to take minutes and to provide certified copies of those minutes if requested. Again, it's your protection.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of this. I think we'd have to make Carol Lee send her back to school on how to do video recording, and I just, I don't see the need for it. I think we're fine with it.
I'm not in favor of this either.
Okay, well, I don't know, there's, is there a motion?
I make a motion to get a similar system to Granicus that would uphold integrity of the closed-session recordings.
All right, seeing no second, then that motion dies. Agenda item number 20 is council committee reports, and I'll start with Councilmember Rothschild.
I have none.
Vias?
None.
None. The only thing I would bring up is we did have at Sandbag last Wednesday, I believe, a report on the High Desert Corridor, and they do have an interactive map, and it's quite unique as to all the different alternatives, and they would like to see this built in the next 10 years. Mike, I think this has been on the drawing board since 1930, so...
Before they had it?
Yeah, before any of us were born. But anyway, it is, it is a unique, interactive map and something that I'll...
Railroad track down there going to Palmdale.
Yes, yes, they are including the rail in that, so. Anyway, moving on to council reports, discussion of possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Councilmember Vias?
I don't have any. I just have a question. Is this the time for...
We'll do that next.
Okay, go ahead.
The only thing I would like to ask the council to consider over the past several years, myself and probably other members of this council have been approached by Senator Feinstein's staff to come out in support of the Desert Protection Act, and I'd like to formally agendize that. I'd like every council member to get a copy of the bill to look at and review prior to it coming to us, along with maybe an executive summary and some of the points. But it just, it addresses use of desert area for recreational purposes as well as for energy, solar energy, things like that. And they've been in our ear for several years. It's never, I don't believe formally come to this council, but I'm going to ask that it formally, do, does come to this council at a future council meeting, probably within the next month and a half or so. So, if the council's okay with that?
I would ask that you specifically address a letter to both the cement plants in terms of their mining interests out there, any of the other mines, and have their input into that as well, because that was some of the big objections a couple of years ago when it came to us. It actually did come to us. I don't know if we took a no position or what it was.
I don't think we took a position.
But anyway, it came to us, and we just had a lot of questions. The mining industry was out there, certainly the recreational and others were out there, and I've seen stories in the news about, we promised to set this aside for the off-road vehicles, and all of a sudden that, those off-roads disappeared after the, you know, the parks. Whatever comes out of all this stuff, at least the protections ought to be nailed down, and I'd like the special interest mining groups to put their two cents into that true.
No, I agree, and I want to make sure that the council has the full gamut of information with respect to this bill, so if I could ask staff to make sure that we have plenty of time to review that, along with if any briefings need to occur with staff or Senator Feinstein's staff and certain council members, I'd encourage that. All right, this time we'll have reports from staff and council members. Doug?
Staff has no additional comments.
I just have a question regarding preparing a response for the VB2 and the other one. I was wondering if the council's going to get the response ahead of time, so I could go through that before the council meeting?
It'll be on the agenda in your agenda packet when it just comes.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
Sure.
All right. I didn't know if it was a presentation.
Mike, anything else? All right, and I have nothing else, so with that, we're adjourned.